Okay, sorry we're a couple of minutes late. It is ten o'clock hour. It is Tuesday, February 11th, 2014. The Board Supervisors of County Del Norte, State of California is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that have been scheduled for a specific time will be heard at that time. Any other item on the agenda can be taken out of sequence to accommodate staff and public availability. And with that, we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask Supervisor Sullivan to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
You know, I might have to American flag seem to be drooped a little bit. I think we need to get that fixed.
Yeah, we better get building maintenance in here to get the flag from three-quarter staff. All right, introduction of new employees.
Yes, Chairman, we have a new employee, Chief Probation Officer Lonnie Raymond, and he was effective at the start of this month. And we welcome Lonnie. He brings five years of experience through the probation department and a lot of new ideas, and we welcome.
Fantastic. Lonnie, what a-
I just wanted to say I'm glad for this opportunity to serve the county. I look forward to doing that for many years and continuing the work that we've done. I want to man a few words, so keep it brief into that.
Lonnie, I'm excited to have you onboard. Look forward to it. I think you're going to be running the AB 109, the CCP, the Community Corrections Program, and I know, I heard rumor that you're interested in the kids, the children, and our juveniles, and maybe going upstream that we haven't been able to do. So I'm really excited about that. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I want to say welcome also, in that I had the opportunity to work with some of your staff. And I was worried, and then all of a sudden I saw this kind of excitement and people talking about this looks like really exciting times. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome. Again, welcome Lonnie. We've spoken before, and I wish you the best, and I know you're going to be in tune with all the issues in your department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Lonnie. All right, report out of closed session.
We had one thing to report. The Board gave direction to the County Administrative Officer to sign an application for the Chapter Eight Application Process for tax-defalted lots.
Very good. And County Council, any other action?
There was no other reportable action.
Okay, as time permits, we did not adjourn, but it will continue closed session after our regular meeting if time allows. This time, the Chair requests any deletions or additions or corrections to the agenda. The only thing I would say is this correction between Chair and the, that it wasn't Supervisor Sullivan. It was, turned out to be me. I don't want to admit that, but that's-
And Mr. Chair, if you, the correction too on number thirty, it's Senator Nielsen's office versus Senator Lamalta's office in the agenda.
Yes, we had a typo on that one, and Mr. Feller will be speaking later-
Yes.
-on behalf of Mr. Van Nielsen.
Very good. All right, this time let's receive brief reports or announcements relative to county business from the fellow supervisors. Start with Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you Chairman Finnegan. First of all, one of my constituents advised me and all of the other supervisors and people speaking to speak into the microphone. I guess we have a tendency to pull away from it, and in some cases it becomes inaudible, so I'm going to make that effort to speak into the microphone so all of our comments are heard on closed-circuit television. Wednesday, January 29th, as the Chair of the New Events Committee for the Chamber of Commerce, I met with committee members to discuss possible new events for this coming year. Nothing to report at this time, but we're looking at a number of new events to add to the existing calendar, and as we come to decisions on that, we'll report them back to you. Monday, February 3rd, I met with the Del Norte County Republican Central Committee members to plan the Second Annual Wine and Cheese by the Sea Event at our home. I also want to announce the Del Norte Republican Party will open its new offices next week at 245 Price Mall on Third Street downtown. Congratulations to Party Chair Karen Sanders and all her great volunteer staff in opening the new location. Although I was not able to attend the meeting of the Del Norte County Tea Party Patriot Steering Committee last week, I learned that the Tea Party will be planning a number of election forums over the next three months to allow the public to listen to the candidates who will run for the June 3rd primary. The Tea Party will also host guest speaker Tom Owen, who is a judge and also a lecturer at College of the Redwoods. It'll be at the floral room tonight at the fairgrounds. His title, "Your Vote Counts." Thursday, met in a pre-agenda meeting with the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority. Our agenda for the afternoon solid waste meeting here at the Flinch Chambers will be the discussion and possible action for some of the ordinances that may be duplicative within the city and the county ordinance. Also met with several parents of Best Maxwell students who continue to raise concerns about the children walking to school across the marked crosswalk at Dream and Eldorado. Several parents have brought to my attention that many northbound vehicles on Eldorado are failing to heed to pedestrian traffic at Dream Stee during school hours. There have been no incidents, injuries, or deaths, thank goodness, but this concern to these parents is still very much alive, and the county will address possible remedies on the agenda this morning. Also met with Del Norte County Veterans Council to discuss the request to have three new signs erected at each Del Norte County portal to read "Where Veterans Are Honored." I requested our Chief Administrative Officer to investigate the cost of these signs and the process for our Board to address erection of the signs to recognize and honor the veterans who reside in Del Norte County. And finally, I did attend the standing-room-only audience at the fairgrounds last week, presentation for Jefferson State. I listened with great interest to Jefferson State spokesman Mark Baird and some of the volunteers who asked the Board to support a declaration for withdrawal to the California Assembly. The argument in support of the Del Norte County joining several other northern California counties is quite compelling. The Board will conduct a workshop at the end of this month to address the viability of becoming the, joining what will become the 51st state of the United States. The Board will also discuss this morning possible action to prepare an advisory voter ballot for the November general election. That's my report. Thank you.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, thank you. I was out of town for a bit the last couple of weeks, so I didn't have a real busy schedule. I did attend the, as Supervisor Gitlin stated, I did attend the State of Jefferson Town Hall meeting. The next day, I did field a number of calls, both pro and con. Probably more pro than con, but still had a lot of action going on there. I attended the benefit dinner for Rulson Coltra, who's fighting cancer. Had a Euro two-by-two and staff meeting yesterday, which was pretty uneventful. And probably the most important thing that I did the last couple of weeks was attended my granddaughter's second birthday. Lily is now two years old. I was at for eight.
Very good. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. I, rather than attending the Jefferson State discussion, I attended what was identified as the School Success Project, where local schools will now be in local control of their funding, and the decision-making becomes part of a community discussion. There were probably about 175 people there, and it was really informative, and we round tabled a lot of the discussions. And the Center for Rural Policy is doing a great job in supporting the documentation, and also the Building Healthy Communities is quite involved. And it was a very positive discussion of the direction that we're going. There was quite an interesting review of the vocational programs that are gaining legs at the high school, including a pathways to health where students start taking classes with College of the Redwoods, and they will end up with an LBN and then eventually an RN degree, and it starts to allow children to take some pre-med classes while they're still enrolled in high school and really start taking a vocational pathway. Also, the IT vocational pathway was extremely exciting, of the work that they're doing with building computers and building programs. And in fact, we have our, a 3D copy machine has been built by the IT Department, and they're getting ready to make their first pliers that are going to be part of the mechanical end of the programs that are happening. So there's the automotive portion of the Vo-Ked has taken off, and that's being very successful. There were a couple of students there that actually, after they graduated from high school in the last couple of years, have found viable employment. And one young man by April will be a master welder in our, in our local community. He will have qualified with all of the certificates. So, our vocational program is really taking off, and that's part of this School Success program that's going to be offered. And so there's some exciting stuff, and people, the community is more than welcome to be involved in this. And I think it's something, it's an opportunity with the new funding from the Department of Education in California, that we can actually, as a community, talk about what our schools are going to look like and what we want to offer. So I would encourage people to contact the district, find out when the next meeting is, and attend, because your voice will be heard. On last Friday, I went to the, I had gotten a phone call from the, one of my friends in the California Conservancy, and said that there was a public hearing happening on the water bond for 2014 that's being proposed. It's being worked out right now, and there was an assembly hearing being held. And I was able to participate in the assembly hearing. One of the big red flags that I noticed in the water bill, I didn't get, I didn't go into a lot of the controversial items, but in the water bond for projects in rural communities or disadvantaged communities, right now, the language just reads that there will be a 50% match in any community that's going to do a major project of a sewer or water or replacement of lift stations and that kind of thing. And a 50% match would put us out of the running. And it does have language that says they may lower the amount of match for disadvantaged communities or rural communities. So I urge that that language be changed to shall make it less of a match, because we need to have guarantee going into that water bond that that would happen. I also encouraged the Assembly members that were in attendance to please consider a enforcement arm of the water bond because of the amount of illegal grows that happen and divert water out of our streams. In fact, in Mendocino County, the Mendocino County Sheriff believes that there's about 500 million gallons of water a day stolen out of the system to be used elsewhere. And so we need to have an enforcement arm that reaches to those illegal water grows. The senior board met. We are in process. We had a hearing that has been postponed to deal with the theft that we experienced and the program malfeasance that we experienced. The state is still asking for us to possibly pay back about $300,000 for projects that were covered, that the majority of them were covered for needy families, but there were some that were not. And so we're still delivering evidence back and forth to the state. We're believing that that's going to possibly come down and ultimately end up in having the assistance for heating and rehabilitation of houses to make, for people of low income to be able to live in a more comfortable way. But hopefully that program will come back to Del Norte County, because we're seeing a disconnect of the number of applications that are being put forward. The Redwood Park Association met, and they're gearing up for the summer. They have finally, the last report financially, that they've exceeded a million dollars in sales, which is a great, great for a nonprofit to be able to be moving forward. I met with a woman named Susan Bohan, I think is her last name, from Building Healthy Communities, where she's doing an analysis of the health disparities in rural communities. And she also gave me a report that I've just started to read that was, I think, finished in 2011, but it's a history analysis of the fishing industry in Del Norte County and how the cycles have worked over the years. I too have had several calls on questions about the State of Jefferson and several discussions. And for some reason, I'm running about a six to one of people saying, "Whoa, I live in California for a reason," to people wanting to have a change. And then I've asked that it be put on the agenda. It will be on the agenda later about the CDBG interpretation of the rules, because we are running up against an extremely difficult situation where the city and the city recipients have to be just city, and where our CDBG historically has reached over social programs that serve the entire community. So we're attempting today in our agenda to possibly get Congressman Huffman and Assembly Member Chesbrough to possibly go and talk to the CDBG folks, because it could be, it could spell crisis for our community, and it could put an extreme burden on the applicants for the county, that we can only give three awards for social programs, yet we have five applicants because they are being forced to not apply at the city side because of the restrictions on being able to serve county residents. So we, I believe, are looking at a crisis there. And then I would just like to announce, it's a little side project that I'm involved in with a group of women, and we call it the Circle of Change, that any, and it's just women at this point, just because we've just been doing it as women, but what we do is-
Like a show-me trip for women?
No, we just have, we just have some snacks, and then we all write a check for, we save $1 a year for every day of the year, and then we take our $365 and we put it in one pool together. And then we meet a second time in the year, and we talk about projects within our community that need a little extra boost. And then we have, we have some money, there's about 20 of us involved at this point. So then we have some money that we can give to programs that can assist children in musical instruments, or can assist children in clothes, or different kinds of programs. So it's very exciting, and if anyone would want to join the Circle of Change, just contact me and I can, we can get you rolling on that, because it's pretty exciting. And we also take half of the money and put it into the Wild Rivers Foundation for an ultimate project later on, and hopefully build that up to a point where we can be using some of the interest for special projects for, for community members in need. So, that's what I've been doing. Thank you.
Good, sounds interesting. Supervisor Sullivan.
Thank you. Had the solid waste meeting, which was a two-hour after the meeting last two, or the last Board of Supervisors meeting, we were in a two-hour meeting until about 7:30 at night, getting feedback from the community on, on the authority. So there was 34 people that showed up. Twenty-eight spoke in favor of leaving everything alone. Six spoke in favor of making changes. I would have hoped that you'd have a better representation of the community, but there were only 34 people that showed up. Attended the State of Jefferson meeting, actually, attended the Schools for Success meeting briefly, and then went over to State of Jefferson, because the two meetings conflicted. I am hoping that the school district is going to follow through on a couple things that was promised when this Cal Endowment thing came through. One is tracking the success of the students. If a student gets, graduates Del Norte, they go on to college, actually tracking it to see if they graduate from college, because right now you get a lot of credit for, you take one class at the college and you've got a college student. That's not accurate. So I think it would do a lot of good going forward to track it in terms of saying, what was the success of the programs we put in place? Did kids graduate from college? Did they go on to a trade? Did they, or did they just drop out and not do anything? It does a couple things. It also builds kind of a library of references for future kids that do come through the schools. And for example, one wants to be an FBI agent. We've got an FBI agent we can contact and say, you know, you went to Del Norte High, can you spend a couple minutes with the kid on the phone? Something along that line. There's a lot of positive things that can come from that, and I'm hoping the school district, because I've been told in a couple different meetings, we are going to track the statistics of what happens to these kids once they leave school. Because how do you design a curriculum for these if you don't know where you're having success and where you're having failure? So, I am hoping that that was a promise that was made a couple years ago. So, so the State of Jefferson meeting, I attended about 300 people approximately, a pretty enthusiastic crowd. And I've fielded a lot of calls, and I've gotten, as Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, I've gotten mixed, mixed results as to whether we should go forward with it, or we should go, or not go forward with it. I've gotten more in favor of going forward with it. A lot of things were brought up, and I do think there's a concern about a lack of representation. That seems to be a common theme, and even the folks that are arguing in terms of leaving things alone and not doing the State of Jefferson, there isn't a strong argument to say we're not getting very good representation for rural counties in California. So, that is a big concern going forward. And so, I was encouraged, they came up. I thought Mark Baird did a great job. He was pretty even keel, not too emotional about stuff, and just dealing with the facts. And I've been told they're working on the numbers right now. So I'd like to see what the numbers, that tends to be my genesis a lot, is to find out what the numbers are and if things, if they function. So, after that meeting, I drove over to Medford, because I had to go to Boise. So, I spent the night, got up early, went to Boise, got to 19-degree weather in Boise with everything white. There is an indication, a sign, when you get off the plane and you breathe in and it hurts to breathe, that's a good time to get back on the plane. Because it was cold. I haven't been in that cold weather for a while. So, I spent a couple days in Boise for company business, and then came back. And just to give you all an idea on flight schedule, delayed flights and missed flights don't just happen in Del Norte County. They happen all, all over the place. So, in Boise, on the flight back, I was supposed to catch, to fly me to Seattle, connect me to, fly me to Medford. I would have gotten in, been all drive home, been in bed by midnight. The flight got delayed to Boise. I got to Seattle at about 11:45. My flight left 15 minutes earlier. I spent four hours in a Ramada in Seattle. Not a great experience on that, but it is nice to know that we're not unique in that situation. So, other than that, I also attended Rosling, Coltra's fundraiser at the Fire Hall. It was really well-attended. It was interesting, the firefighters had actually figured a drive-through method on the Fire Hall in Washington. I thought it was a pretty economical, efficient way to do. You could just drive through your car and drive right out. It was, it was pretty cool. But I understand they raised about $15,000 for her. So, that's real, we wish, we wish her our best. I know she's going through treatments right now. And other than that, coming up this week is jam-packed with meetings. Besides this meeting, there's a solid waste management meeting tomorrow, where we are dealing with the ordinances that the authority passed in the past. And then I have a meeting in Gasky tomorrow evening regarding, there's some tree removal and tree topping that, that the Department of Aviation for Caltrans is requiring be moved out there. So we want all the neighbors to know. We've had a, we've already had a couple meetings out there, so this will be another follow-up meeting to that. And then Thursday, we have a meeting with Local Transportation Commission. And other than that, it should be a jam-packed week. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. I had a few meetings. The first one, I had to go out of town for the California State Association of Counties. The officers had meetings with the different corporate, a few of the corporates that help and benefit CSAC to keep our dues lower, and to find out how to work better with counties to enhance the services and how we can work cooperatively. Sat in a panel regarding renewable energy. There was also a panel that had Jim Broltie, head of the Republican, former Senator, head of the Republican California Party, as well as the Vice Chair, Eric Baumann, from the Democratic Party, giving a political forecast of what to expect and why the votes are going the way they're going, and the different tactics and whatnot. Then also had the corporate heads of Bell, excuse me, of Dell and of HP, Hula Packard, and talking about how technology can better help counties and what can be done, and working with the corporate structure there. So it was very informative. I also had some delays in the airport coming back, but the main complaint was the delay- I also had some delays in the airport coming back, but the main complaint was the delays that were happening in Medford that was causing the backup of the planes not to get there. So, and I've heard that multiple times. So if you think you're going to get away from it by driving to Medford, not only will it cost you more, but the delays will be greater, from what I understand. Something to think about. Had a meeting with a couple of members of the Healthcare District, talked about a future two-by-two that they have requested, we'll be working on that. Also attended the UROC two-by-two with Supervisor Hemmingson. And had sort of forgotten the duties of the Chair, just how many meetings on a daily basis you have with staff, department heads, and the CAO, on a daily basis. I think Jay's getting tired of seeing me. And then, on a personal note, had the opportunity to attend my granddaughter's 16th birthday, adjacent in the same pizza place. Jay's daughter was having a birthday party. Very interesting, it made me remember that I really did like the preschool and kindergarten birthday parties better than the 16-year-old birthday parties. But it's always nice to be with family. And that will be it for my report. How about we get a brief report from the CAO?
Well, over the last couple of weeks, a couple of the items that have been touched on by the Board members, a lot of the meetings that the Board members attend, committee meetings we also attend. Did attend the State of Jefferson Town Hall, and talked to numerous people at that. Have been developing some local financial data in response to some of the questions that have come up with the proposal. Did some risk management training, is one of the functions of the, of administration. We also have risk management, OES training, because we also have the Office of Emergency Services, and we did some Emergency Operations Center training, as well as the planning meeting for the tsunami function that's going to be happening here in a few months, a very large function I'm sure everybody's been hearing about. We've been in employee negotiations and also dealing with a number of different issues that have come up, that come up on a daily basis that we're asked to get involved in.
Very good. Okay, we're going to go ahead and do the Consent Agenda next, because there's a couple of proclamations that are on there that there's people in the audience that are waiting for. So can I get a motion on the Consent Agenda, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any member of the public wish to comment on any item that's on the Consent Agenda? No, bring it back to the Board. Any further comments? Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes, minus number five, I have a conflict of interest.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. Okay, item number eight of the Consent Agenda was a proclamation proclaiming the week, well, you're going to hear about it, February 16th, 27th, 22nd, excuse me, as Engineers' Week, and I would ask Supervisor Hemmingson to read that proclamation.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this is proclamation of Engineers' Week, February 16th through the 22nd, 2014. Whereas America's engineers transform ideas into reality, solving problems using science and technology to produce services and systems to better serve the needs of society. And whereas engineers serving Delmar County, the state, and country, work to design and construct the following types of projects: airports, roads, railroads, harbors, parks, subdivisions, surveys, bridges, buildings, water systems, flood control facilities, wastewater treatment, seismic safety project, environmental enhancement. Whereas engineers strive for quality, economy, and the betterment of life for our community. And whereas throughout the nation, the week of February 16th through the 22nd, 2014 is being recognized as National Engineers' Week, coinciding with George Washington's birthday, our nation's first engineer. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Delmar County, in recognition of the contributions of engineers to society, and in an effort to promote the interests of the youth in the community in math, science, and engineering, does hereby proclaim the week of February 16th, 2014, as Engineers' Week in Delmar County. Passed and adopted this 11th day of February, 2014.
Engineer?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, very good. You're up.
Please. Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors, Delmar County staff, members of the public. My name is Yorch Edes. I serve as the President of the North Coast Branch of the San Francisco Section of the American Society of Civil Engineers. I'm an Assistant Professional Engineer, Black History and Native American. I'm here today on behalf of the North Coast Branch of the American Society of Civil Engineers to accept the amendment with proclamation. I would like to thank you, Kami of Delmar Board of Supervisors, for acknowledging Engineers' Week, and the contributions that engineers make to our society. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Drop your resume off with Health or Human Resources.
Item number nine, we have another proclamation, and it is recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, as requested by the Delmar Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And Supervisor McClure, would you please read that for us?
Thank you. This is the proclamation of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. Whereas although American involvement in the conflict of Vietnam spans several decades and presidencies, the ground offensive officially began in March of 1965 with the deployment of 2,500 Marines. By Christmas of that year, nearly 200,000 American troops were in the country. And whereas through long and controversial, though long and controversial in nature, this war in many ways defined an entire generation of Americans, and numerous brave men and women served during this conflict. 350,000 California sons and daughters served in the military during Vietnam War. 5,822 died in that war or are still missing. Of those who died, seven were from Delmar County. And whereas by the official end of the Vietnam War in April 1975, nearly 300 American servicemen and women had been on the ground, in the air, on the rivers, and at the sea, and at sea within the Vietnam borders, serving in some capacity during that conflict. At least 58,195 paid the ultimate sacrifice during this difficult and painful period. And whereas in half a century since the official beginning of the Vietnam War, our nation has grappled with the sensitive effects of this struggle, which accompanies all wars. Yet we remain thankful to those who fought in this conflict, and honor the legacy and service that they built. And whereas the freedoms and the liberties that we are blessed with and to enjoy are a direct result of the courage, the devotion, and the sacrifice of members of our armed forces, we are grateful for their brave service and draw inspiration and pride, and are now therefore be it proclaimed that Delmar County Board of Supervisors honors the courage, the devotion of our brave soldiers in recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, passed and adopted on this, the 11th day of February, 2014. [applause]
I am wonderful, honored, and the Delmar Chapter of the American Revolution. Please let us remember that it is in the name of the United States.
Pay tribute to the men and women of the County of Delmar, who answered the call of duty with courage and valor and served during the Vietnam War. Throughout this commemoration, let us strive to live up to their example by showing our Vietnam veterans, their families, and all of the men and women who have served our country the fullest respect and support of a grateful nation. The Delmar Chapter would like to thank the Delmar County Board of Supervisors for approving the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War proclamation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, I would just like to say, having been raised in Delmar County and here, I knew some of those seven, and I wasn't sure I was going to make it through the proclamation, because we had families that gave great service to our community. Thank you.
That just sort of takes your breath away. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to do public comment. Any member of the public may address the Board on any issue that is either on or off the agenda. If it's on the agenda, I might ask that you hold those comments until that item is heard. And since it doesn't look like we have a lot of people here, we'll go ahead and take you as you raise your hand. Anybody? Oh, Richard, hi. Please.
Unfortunately, as a member of the Solid Waste Task Force and a county representative, representative, I had to vote no on the vote for the ordinances. I think it'd be a mistake to do away with all the sections of the ordinance passed a number of years ago by another task force. The vote was three with an abstention, and two of us voting no. The reason I voted no is, in those ordinances, there is a section doing with responsibility. Dave Mason pointed out something that I think is important and should not be forgotten by the county. In that, he used the example of a gentleman in Klamath, who was illegally dumping his trash all over the forest up there. Without the tools that currently in the ordinances, he cannot prosecute people like the mobile homeowner. To do away with certain sections of those ordinances, I think would be a mistake. I deeply believe the county and the city, again, should sit down and decide what ordinances that are currently in that Solid Waste Task Force ordinance are workable, and not do away with all of them. I think if it ain't broke, why fix it? I mean, change it.
Thank you, Richard. Next, please. Yes, hiding over there in front of Mr. Mason. Yes.
Good morning, Linda Sutter, 5th District. First, I'd like to thank you for having the Kahunas to, you know, put the Jefferson State people in check a little bit, after they have less than 1% of the signatures needed in the county. That's, I'm grateful. The reason I'm here today, though, is to kind of discuss, or bring to your attention the fact that our courthouse is not properly secure. We have the equipment that you have to walk through to get scanned, but I was told by the Sergeant of the Sheriff's Department, and I don't know his name, that they only use it during high-profile cases. And I think that's an accident waiting to happen. In Oregon, and I know we're in California, they have a volunteer group for the Sheriff's Department, and I did volunteer for a short time over there. And the volunteers were the ones that were scanning the people that were going into the courthouse. It didn't cost any money. And they also had volunteers for substations, like out in Williams, Merlin, and I can't think of the other little town that they'd have. You know, the people, if they had problems out within the county, they would come to the station, and it was all volunteer, it didn't require money from the county. And I think it's something to maybe consider or think about for the security, because I don't care if it's a high-profile case or not. People get emotional, and you can walk in that place with a weapon any day, except for a high-profile day. And something's going to happen, and I don't think that we want that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Some of us have thought there's been meetings when we wish we had them at this front door. Any other public comment?
I'm Victoria Dickey, I live in David Finnegan's district. Hadn't planned to speak, but since Richard brought it up, I've attended the Solid Waste Task Force subcommittees and task force meetings, and time after time, I've seen the members request that the city and the county go through these ordinances and figure out what they want to re, to keep. Basically, it's not now, I have a headache, I have something more pressing. So they've tried to get input, and they've gotten nowhere. I don't think you need 40 pages of stuff in order to get half a page worth of enforcement. I believe that the appropriate way to handle this is to nullify the entire ordinance group, 2008, 1, 2, 3, and 2009, 1. I think that there are things that, I mean, prior to this time, you had ordinances, city and county, that were used. Yes, you can fashion something, but until it becomes an urgent matter, nobody does anything about it. So the recommendation was made to revoke, repeal, all of those that will be coming up. I don't know when it'll get to you, but I think that it is so many layers of government, and I would request that each one of you go through all of your ordinances and pick one each month that's no longer functioning. Every month, new things come in, but nothing ever goes out. Life changes, we should get rid of some of these old.
Thank you very much. Any more public comment? Okay. Then we're going to move on with the agenda. We do have a 10:30 item, which is presentation by a code enforcement officer, Mr. Mason. I think this is probably a follow-up to a previous meeting.
Yes, this is, last year, the Board directed us to put together a top 10 list, and with accompanying slides and descriptions and all that, and so I have all that ready for you. I'll bring it up over here.
Sure.
Okay, this is the code enforcement top 10, as requested by the Board. Each case, establishing priorities, each case is evaluated to determine the level of negative impact to the community, and the level of priority for enforcement action. The majority of cases are fairly straightforward, and the enforcement officer is expected to operate with the minimum amount of supervision. The enforcement officer may consult with and/or receive direction from the department head. When a situation arises where the Board of Supervisors wants to make a case a higher priority, the County Administrative Policy Manual requires that the request should be made to the department head, who then directs the enforcement officer. How the cases are rated. High priority is a case where there's an immediate or serious...
If you could try to get away from reading the whole thing verbatim, word for word, and give us the highlights, that'd be great.
As you wish. So criteria for case evaluation...
I didn't mean for you to skip an entire page, but sometimes we can read faster than the presentation.
Right. So essentially, there's three levels, high, medium, and low. High is immediate threat, medium is where it could become a significant threat if left unattended, and low priority is where the impact on the community is negligible, but there is a technical violation. So going on to the criteria, and this needs a little bit of clarification, because there was some confusion before, which is why we're bringing this before the Board. So the first criteria is degree of hazard. Anything which requires immediate action to prevent the loss of life, limb, or property is classified as an emergent... Each case, establishing priorities, each case is evaluated to determine the level of negative impact to the community and the level of priority for enforcement action. The majority of cases are fairly straightforward, and the enforcement officer is expected to operate with the minimum amount of supervision. The enforcement officer may consult with and/or receive direction from the department head. When a situation arises where the board of supervisors wants to make a case a higher priority, the county administrative policy manual requires that the request should be made to the department head, who then directs the enforcement officer. How the cases are rated. High priority is a case where there's an immediate or serious.
If you could try to get away from reading the whole thing verbatim, word for word, and give us the highlights, that'd be great.
As you wish. So criteria for case evaluation.
I didn't mean for you to skip the entire page, but sometimes we can read faster than the presentation.
Right. So essentially, there's three levels, high, medium, and low. High is immediate threat. Medium is where it could become a significant threat if left unattended, and low priority is where the impact on the community is negligible, but there is a technical violation. So going on to the criteria. And this needs a little bit of clarification, because there was some confusion before, which is why we're bringing this before the board. So the first criteria is degree of hazard. Anything which requires immediate action to prevent the loss of life, limb, or property is classified as an emergency and gets top priority over all of the cases. Those situations where a serious life safety issue could develop if not addressed in a timely manner are high priority, but not an emergency. When a condition or a violation presents a low degree of hazard, it can still be a priority case if other criteria are met. Second criteria is degree of impact to the community, and several factors have to be considered when estimating the degree of impact. Factors considered include, we're not limited to, the number of complaints received, number of households affected, how much is visible from the public right-of-way or adjacent properties. Typically, a complaint filed by a group, such as the Neighborhood Watch Group, indicates a higher degree of impact and a greater weight is usually given to those complaints. The CIO or a member of the board of supervisors can submit a complaint and request that it be a high priority for investigation. However, the actual abatement or enforcement is still subject to the limitations imposed by the availability of the necessary resources or the lack thereof. Third criteria is availability of resources. And there are several properties in the county that are severely blighted right now and in need of demolition. However, due to a lack of funding, those cases receive a lower overall score because we simply can't do them. These cases are reviewed at the beginning of each budget year and/or when additional funding, like grant funding, is available. Fourth degree is, the fourth criteria is degree of malice. Occasionally, the most appropriate response to a code enforcement violation is immediate criminal prosecution, such as illegally harvesting timber from a county right-of-way or intentionally dumping hazardous waste. Fifth criteria is time available and current caseload. This is the part that really needs clarification. Rather than have a low priority case wait forever at the bottom of the list, staff endeavors to address these minor cases when it is convenient and does not interfere with the higher priority cases. A good example of this is when a low priority case is adjacent to or near a higher priority case, and staff is going to be in the area anyway. Often, a quick visit can resolve a minor issue with a minimum amount of effort, such as a conversation or a simple warning letter advising of the problem and corrective actions required. So if time becomes available, some lower priority cases get handled ahead of the higher priority cases. So our current caseload, and this is only two weeks out of date, but this changes daily. It's right around plus or minus in this area. So we have 231 open cases, 19 are high priority, 193 are medium, and 19 are on the low list. Average number of new cases opened each year in Del Norte is 362. Average number of cases opened at any one time between 200 and 250. These numbers are fairly consistent in Del Norte from year to year. Statewide, the average code enforcement officer handles roughly 250 cases per year. So with our average of 362, we're usually 150 to 170% above the statewide average. Now into the meat and potatoes. So here's a typical one that's on the top 10 list. It's on Kings Valley Road. The house in the front, the floor's rotted out, the ceiling's caving in. It needs to be demolished. House in back is dilapidated motor home, not a motor home, mobile home, sorry. They both need to be demolished or moved. Based on prior experience, probably cost about $26,000. Smith River, this is a dilapidated uninhabitable house in Smith River. Until recently, was inhabited by some people with substance abuse problems. There's roughly 400 cubic yards of trash at this property, about 10, 40-yard dumpsters worth, and a dozen or so vehicles. Demolition cleanup probably be around $25,000. Fortunately, this property just sold. The new owner has promised to clean it up as quickly as possible, and we're working with them to assist them with removing the abandoned vehicles. Downtown Smith River, Old Hotel, septic system failed, there's insufficient room for replacement system. The building remains uninhabitable and unreparable. Likely cost of abatement between $20,000 and $30,000. This one's on Loft Avenue. Property owner of record is deceased, utilities disconnected due to lack of payment.
Dave, I got a quick question on the Smith River one. Is that, is that property owned or it's in foreclosure?
I don't know the current status on the ownership of that property. I'd have to look. I'm sorry, I just don't have that with me right now.
Okay, because I know there's tons of residents out there who want to see it painted a different color. So even if we have to wait to abate the whole structure, if they can just put a coat of paint on it and make it white again, would be great.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have an ordinance on pink color. So this one, relative of the prior owner occupies it with several others, have a long history of substance abuse, and it's a blighted eyes sore. Likely cost to abate is $5,000 to $10,000 just to vacate, clean, and board it up. This one's on Lynch Lane. This is an old mobile home that went in without a permit and a pole barn that was started with a permit and never finished. It collapsed in the middle of the night during a storm. Likely cost to abate the mobile home around $7,000, and for the pole barn, probably around $10,000. Harmony Lane, dilapidated unsafe house hidden from view by an enormous hedge to the left of that mobile home. Backyard is full of huge piles of trash, which you can kind of see in the other photograph. The occupant is related to the owner of record. Likely cost of abatement between $30,000 and $50,000, depending upon how much of the degree we could recycle as scrap metal. This one, escrow just closed on January 22nd. The new owner is due to submit his remediation plan this Friday at 2:00. I believe they want to tear it down and turn it into a vacant lot. The one next to it, that is just as ugly right on the main thoroughfare, the property owner's attempting to sell it as is and has promised to clean it up. He's made some efforts, but he's a little slow to act. This one, another typical property off of Laguna, where the, there's an occupied RV, cars and trash accumulate. There's one on Roy Avenue. House was damaged with fire and abated. Recovery lien was $8,639. Property was sold. The new owner began repair stock permits, then moved in friends and families. And because this is a manufactured home, the permits have to be issued by the state, and the Department of Housing and Community Development has not been very helpful with this one. They won't issue an order to vacate due to a lack of permit. Once they pull the permit, then they'll do something with it, but until then, they're not being very helpful. On Douglas, this was an older home that recently changed owners. The new owner began rehabilitation, but since ceased progress and has become a blight upon the community. Based on past experience, probably cost $5,000 to $8,000 to clean up the property and board it up and secure it. So following, we're on the top 10 but have recently been abated or in the process. 169 in Klamath was an unpermitted trailer park with six or eight travel trailers and mobile homes. It's now a vacant lot. The lien was paid, and the new owner's planned to apply for permits to put in a business. This one took several years to abate. Del Norte Street. Turn the page. Property's overgrown with large accumulations of trash and debris. It was abated by the county. The property was lien $7,417 to recover the costs. Dakota Avenue, abandoned house, attractive nuisance. Using grant funds, we were able to demolish and remove it. Property was lien $14,532. Here's some typical minor cases, just for perspective. So one on the left is a vacant building with graffiti, and a letter to the owner was sufficient to achieve compliance. Foot on the right's a typical abandoned vehicle or boat full of trash. This one was towed and scrapped using vehicle abatement funds from the state. Another typical case, one on the left, is occupied RV labeled as Unit E at an apartment complex. So it's an illegal additional unit. We've sent notice to the owner, and they're contesting it, so that'll be scheduled for a hearing. Car on the right, typical abandoned car. We have state funds, we can immediately tow those, and usually they go end up in the scrap. Another typical minor case. Here we have a business with a lot of outdoor storage. Normally, we send them a notice or letter, hey, you got too much, you need to clean up, and usually they do. One on the right's typical residence where they're accumulating trash in the carport. We try to do with a letter to the landlord and the tenants, and if that doesn't work, then we do the notice and take them through the hearing process, and if necessary, go pick up the trash for them. So our enforcement options from, we can do a verbal warning, written warning, notice of violation, and that's just an official, this is your problem, this is what you have to do. The next step is the notice of nuisance in order to abate, which is part of the abatement process, and that notice gets recorded on the title, they go through the hearing. Another option we have is an administrative citation with civil fines. We can do criminal charges, file it with the DA. The DA will review the, excuse me, the DA will review the case and determine whether or not prosecution is appropriate. Another option we have, we haven't used yet in Del Norte County, city's used it, we haven't, is the receivership. We applied to the Superior Court to take custody, care, control of the property through the receivership process. That's a very expensive process, and the property owner usually ends up losing the property because they can't pay the costs. And then the last one, which we only use in emergency, is summary abatement. And that's where we go in and just clean up the mess and then do the legal process after. And that one, we do as the last, only if we really, really have to, because if it goes to a hearing, and the hearing finds that the summary abatement was inappropriate, the county's stuck with the cost of the low-cost recovery. So where do we go from here? Our goal is to preserve and enhance the appearance and stability of Del Norte through diligent and fair enforcement of codes and ordinances, resulting in improved quality of life for the entire community. Our plan is to seek additional grant funding and the most effective methods for abatements to continue to work with those who are willing and to do as much as possible with what we have. We will continue to prosecute the unwilling and the recalcitrant when necessary. Any questions?
Great presentation. Supervisors, questions?
I just think, Dave, you've done a great job in the past. I know you've had some major projects that you've addressed and stuff along that line. And this is, because I requested a while ago to put this on, what are the priority top 10 projects on there? And I can probably, there's probably a couple more out there, obviously with 231 cases out there. I didn't see, on your past successes or the cleanups, I didn't see any of the Union Street. Was that not in the top 10 or?
We addressed that in a prior slideshow, which is why I didn't bring it up again, just to avoid redundancy.
Supervisor, clear.
Yes, I have a question in relationship to burnouts. We have a burnout on Glen and Del Norte, or it might be Mackin.
Mackin.
What's that process? Does the fire department notify the landowner to do the necessary repairs and the cleanup? Or does that fall into our purview? Or where is that? Because it seems to be just left.
It would be nice if the fire department would take part in that process, but usually they go as far as have the power company pull the meter, and then they're done after the fire's out, and then they refer it back to us for follow-up. So on that one there, the, the bank has been slow in dragging their feet into doing anything. We finally got them to board it up. I have an abatement warrant right now to pick up the trash, because the bank, for whatever reason, wouldn't do that. In the California Civil Code, when you acquire a property through foreclosure, if you're given a 30-day notice to clean up or board up, and you don't, then you're then subject to a $1,000 a day fine for failure to comply. The banks have gotten wise to that, and they're hold off on filing the last piece of paper, transferring the title until the very last second, because the clock doesn't start until that document is recorded. And what you end up with is like this one here on Mackin.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Dave, I want to thank you for your responsiveness to most of the complaints that come in. I know there's a lot of them out there, and a lot of work to be done. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, Dave, superb job, presentation. I know you're one person, and you're doing great work. Give us an update on the grant applications. I think you're in process right now in the first part of this year for certain monies. And is it enough for you to do your job adequately? And how can the private sector pitch in and help?
Okay, we just submitted our grant application for the Farm and Ranch Cleanup Grant. It was for $138,000. We have yet to hear back from them, because they don't work that fast, because we just submitted it yesterday. But we believe our packet is complete, and we're optimistic, because we're working with staff in Sacramento to make sure that everything in the application was in conformance with what they needed to process the grant application. Our next step in the grant application process is to apply for illegal disposal site cleanup, the IDS Grant, which is the one that we had three years ago. You can apply for that every three years. And so time's coming around again for that cycle. Last time, we had $78,000. We're going to try for a lot more this year. Last year, we got all that was left in the pot. That's all they had, and so we took every nickel. So we're optimistic we can get more this time, because what we did with the last grant, the amount of solid waste that was removed was phenomenal, just based on the way we used the grant money and what we hauled off. So we get extra points for being highly effective and using the money in an appropriate manner.
Great. And Dave, also for me, great job. I get a lot of the calls, and it's always nice for you to refresh the process, tell people that there are time periods, but it's always nice when you can try to get people to work cooperatively. It usually happens quickly or quicker, and definitely doesn't fall as a burden to the general fund, which we always appreciate. So good job. Keep up the good work. Thanks very much.
Chair, if I could add one more question. Your top 10 list on that, did you have a total dollar? You said per project, you had a dollar amount for each. If you had a wish list, what's the pool of money to get the top 10 out of the way?
It'd be about $250,000, $300,000 for the top 10.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Appreciate it. Yeah, if any member of the public wants, please come forward.
I'd just like to know, you gave us a list of priorities and the processes, but what's the length of time for each process? I mean, you send out a letter first, and I can't remember exactly how, what you had listed, but how much time do you give them to answer that letter? And then what's the next step? And how, what's the total time that a person can expect?
That's a difficult one to answer, because each one goes on its own merits. Typically, a warning letter gives them 30 days to comply. Notice of nuisance by ordinance gives them five days to start, 15 days to finish. Depending upon funding and availability and how willing they are to cooperate. I've had cases that went to a hearing, like the one in Klamath. It took three years, but that's because the property owner made continuous progress and reported to the hearing officer every 30 days to show their progress. And the amount of money the county spent was just my time and a few dumpsters, as opposed to using general funds to haul the trash to the dumpster.
So if you send somebody a letter and they don't respond, what do you do?
They go to the next step in the process, they get the official notice.
And then, so that's kind of what I'm looking at.
And if they don't comply with that, then it gets scheduled for a hearing, goes for the hearing officer. Hearing officers, several options. If they submit a mediation plan and want to work with the county, they can get extensions. If they don't show up, or they just say, you know, F U, I'm not going to do it, then the hearing officer can authorize them to do an immediate abatement, depending upon availability of funds.
And if you have a specific question or a specific property, Dave will be happy to meet with you after.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, please. And I'll take in the back, and then Dawn. And go ahead and address your questions to the board, if you would.
Having, you know, seen firsthand in my neighborhood, you know, the progress or lack of progress being made on a certain property, I too am concerned about the time length to resolve some of these issues. The property is a fire hazard. People are living in the dwelling. It butts up against other houses very closely, and this has been, and the picture doesn't do it justice, the situation has deteriorated, not improved in some respects. And so, you know, it made the top 10 list. I'm glad to see that, but this has been going on for several years. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Dawn. I just wanted to share with you that the property on Loft Street is scheduled for tax sale. So I know we had a lady come in, yes, who was a neighbor, who was inquiring about it, and I don't know if somebody were to buy a piece of property like that, is there a process where maybe the fire department can come in for training and burn it down? I was just curious about that, too, but also just to let you know that that's also scheduled for tax sale.
Usually just takes an air quality permit, they take a look, see what kind of hazardous materials would be included in the burn.
Anyway, I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Good. Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? If not, Dave, thanks very, very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
If anybody has an issue with a specific piece of property, please feel free to contact David, Community Development Department. If you feel that you're going to have retaliation by a neighbor, contact your supervisor. Your supervisor will be happy to sign the complaint if you will just fill it out. And with that, we're going to go ahead to a presentation. We're running a little behind. Environmental Health Department.
Good morning, commissioners.
Commissioners, I am Brian McNally and this is my associate, Hua Moa. We have 14 primary programs and probably another half a dozen duties, other duties as required. We're going to just go over the bullet points, so we're not going to belabor it, but to begin, our food safety program, I'm going to let Hua present that. And he'll also present what we have in the way of a housing program, recreational health and water quality, and then I will take it over. Hua, it's all yours.
Well, the first one, I'm just food safety. Basically, in food safety, we do routine inspections on restaurants, markets and mobile food units. We'll look for the temperature, make sure the food is within the right temperature, maybe make sure the facilities are clean, well maintained, and the food process or the handling are correct up to the California Food Code. Complaints, we'll get complaints, we'll go out there, investigate and depending on what we see and what we find, we'll come to a conclusion of what the next step should be. With federal state recalls, they'll, we'll get updates of items, food that are being recalled in local markets. We'll go to those markets and we'll make sure that these items are pulled off the shelves. The next one, the housing. For housing, we, we inspect the detention facilities and the county jails, make sure that the cells are clean, well maintained, they have proper bedding, anything that they need for their personal hygiene or whatever to make them feel comfortable in there and make sure there's no vermin or any, any kind of those in the cells. For complaints on mobile, mobile home parks, we'll usually refer them to Housing and Community Development since they oversee it. Anything referring to flights, which is, we refer to code enforcement, like what Dave Mason was, what his presentation was about. Right as of right now, we don't have no hotel or motel inspection program, but hopefully we'll have one in the future. But basically, if we get any complaints from referring to hotels regarding vermin, bedbugs or any kind of mold, we'll go there, inspect it and see what, see if there's any of these issues at the hotel and then from there we'll tell the manager or the owner what steps they could do to eliminate these. For recreational health, we conduct swimming pools, spa inspections. I believe there's six pools within the county. We inspect them every summer. We'll be looking for the pH, chlorines, making sure that the pools have the proper safety equipments in case of any drowning or any incidents. Make sure that they have this, the sign up there notifying individuals around the pool. Then, besides that, for plan checks, whenever a pool is being built, we'll go over plan checks, see if they're up to the regulations and be there to inspect during the construction, making sure everything is properly built. And for monitoring for coastal and freshwater, we don't have a program for that yet too, but we're, we're monitoring it on a as, as need basis or whenever anybody in the community has a, has a complaint, we'll go look at it. For water quality, we issue permits for water wells, monitoring wells and the abatement of wells during, with the permit, we'll look at it, look at the flow plans, make sure that all the setbacks are met. And then, once we approve that, then once the drill, the drillers are on the site, their drilling will be out there to inspect, to make sure that they seal the, and you're sealed properly. And also we provide assistance to the Crescent City, the cross contamination for their water obtained through wells being around near the, near city water lines.
Yeah, I prefer standing here and talking. I'm a little congested. I hope I'm clear enough to, I'll try to get this microphone, is it coming in? Okay.
You're good.
Okay, good. We also have a land use program. We provide environmental health division input concerning water supply, sewage and solid waste disposal into the land use process, which is primarily under the planning department. We also supply real estate letters to the Department of Real Estate to subdivide when all requirements are met. We don't get a lot of those. We're starting to get them again. Real estate's been a little slow the last couple of years, as you know. Vector control, animal-borne diseases. We do rabies investigations. We prepare animal heads for shipment to vector-borne disease lab for testing. We get the help from the veterinarians on that. I have some rabies residual from when I had rabies shots for cutting off heads, but I usually let the veterinarians do it because I don't think my titres are there anymore. They've been very helpful on that. West Nile virus investigation and testing and shipment to the lab for confirmation. The good news is we have not had any West Nile cases in our county for the last three years. They've had a few in Trinity, they've had some horses, but that's about as near as we're getting and I hope it stays that way. Lyme disease, Pacific black-legged tick, deer tick, identification as an odd needed, as needed basis, I'll go over to the 880 North Crest to the community health on, only had about four of these in the last two years and they were all black-legged ticks and these people ended up getting confirmed having Lyme disease. So it is here in Del Norte County, they did a tick survey with sticky coats going through the woods and identified 25% of the ticks in Del Norte County as Lyme disease carriers, so it's out there. Best thing is to realize it's out there, use D and things like that and be careful and check for ticks when you, when you come back from the woods. Another program we have is solid waste, and I'm going to give this to Hua because he's our local enforcement agency in the solid waste section, so.
Okay, for solid waste, as the local enforcement agencies, we oversee the transfer station, the three transfer stations in the county, the compost facility and the landfill. Basically, during the inspection of these facilities, we'll look for, see if the facility's cleaned, has the, have the proper documents, paperwork, make sure they're doing the load checks daily, making sure that they're just up to, up to standard with the regulations. We also issue, issue permits and hazardous, for hazardous waste events. And we review permits, for example, a five-year review, we'll review every five years, we'll make sure that it's compliant with CalRecycle, which is the waste board. And with the inspection for the transfer facilities is, for the Del Norte transfer station, it's monthly for the other two transfer stations, the compost and the closed landfill, it's quarterly.
Another program that we have is the liquid waste program. That includes permits and inspection of onsite sewage systems, basically your septic tank and leach field. We permit and inspect septic haulers. We have three licensed in the county. One is from down in the San Joaquin Valley, but they do, they come up here to do work for Caltrans. Another is Steve's in Humboldt County, and they come up here occasionally, but our big hauler is Roderudr out of Brookings. We review the onsite soils evaluations, the PERC tests, the, sometimes they have engineered, you'll check particle size, that's another method of doing it for land divisions. Like I say, we haven't had a whole lot of them lately, but there is a little bit of an uptick because I got a letter from a Realtor and a subdivision on my desk. We respond to and investigate septic system complaints. Failing septic system, it's getting in my well, we got E. coli, things like that. And while it's not part of our program, I have been involved in the high-water events and the pump station blowouts and the blowouts at the contactors over at the wastewater treatment plant with both, formerly with Jim Barnes and now with Eric Weir because we're kind of their, their technical rep, I guess, if you want to use the incident command system analogy. So I'm heavily involved with them too, and it's probably a good idea. There's, they're putting in a new sewage line right now and thank goodness they're getting it done. Hazardous waste materials. This is the COOPA program. It's a state mandated program for which we can charge fees that otherwise we wouldn't be able to do it. Business plans, every business that has above a certain level of chemicals needs to have one. And we've got probably about just under 100 in our county. Mostly small, medium businesses, a couple of big ones. Hazardous waste storage and treatment. That's, that can go from waste oil to more complicated chemicals. We've got milk runs that come through here, Chico Drain Oil, Evergreen Environmental, and for our medical waste, SteriCycle. They usually do a pretty good job. Underground storage tanks, gasoline, diesel, kerosene. We only have one kerosene tank, that's Renner Patriot. But we do the, we go with the contractors, Beacom, Humboldt, for the annual monitoring certifications. And we also go out when repairs are needed, oversee, see what they want to do and just give it the rubber stamp and I, because these two contractors are actually pretty good and I don't have any problem with them. If we get somebody that I'm not familiar with, we probably have to look over the plans. We oversee the removal of underground storage tanks and site remediation. Since I've been here, only the old Colvin site, which is now part of Redwood Chevron on South 101, has had any tanks removed. We had permits for two tanks, the concrete trucks were going to come the next day, it was eight o'clock at night and the sun was going down and they found two more waste oil tanks. That's when you issue a permit right on site, they'll move it out so they get their trucks in, and they successfully did. But by and large, we're not getting a lot of tank removals. Respond to hazardous material spills. Typically, these are fuel, diesel, truck tips over saddle tank spills, the car that burned up down at the river, things like that. We do get some more complicated ones. We had Apria Health Cares about two years ago. They had 500 gallons of liquid oxygen in a truck and it was leaking inside the truck, which fortunately was contained because it was on an asphalt street. Was it Fifth Street? Yeah, I think it was. And it was right where, near where I live, so I couldn't even go home. But I went over and talked to Dana, the Assistant Fire Chief, because I think Steve was in Medford getting a root canal. And he, they were too close and I says, you got to be a football field because that stuff's, it's a high explosive in contact and shock sensitive when it's in contact with asphalt. So he wasn't sure because I was the new guy and so he called our, we have a, an agreement with the Eureka Fire Department to come up here and remediate any hazardous situation that's not under Caltrans. And so he called them and they, the guy from Eureka laid lies, he said, yeah, you need 100 meters. Well, that's a football field, about 330 feet, so. So they moved the evacuation zone a little further, didn't help me because I was awful close to it, but everything worked out okay. We had, the fire department was great. The guy from Apria was looking at it, he says, we really only have a few gallons, let's just leave it there and let it evaporate because the leak was high on the tank. And it's, liquid oxygen's at about 270 degrees below zero, so it evaporates pretty fast. No fire, no explosion, no harm, no foul. That's the spill type thing that we occasionally, I'm hoping we'll get nothing. The only thing of real, the only super hazardous chemicals out at the dock for making ice, I'll just leave it at that. The only time I've been out there is the regular inspection and right tsunami day on March 11th, I went out there with Rich Young as the surges were subsiding. I pretty much know where the bad stuff is in the county and it's important. We, Heidi Kuntzle has created a disc with all the hazardous materials information and she has provided it to the fire chiefs, through Steve, all the volunteer fire chiefs, Calfire, everybody that needs it, so kudos to Heidi for this. Okay. We also, there's a pesticide superfund site here in Del Norte County that's hopefully going to be remediated really soon, but we're getting a little blowback from State Department of Toxic Substances. They don't think it's properly remediated yet. Federal EPA will probably give us the blessing. We have four wells now, monitoring wells, and two of them have been negative for years. The other two, sometimes one of them's negative, sometimes it's not. But I think we're getting real close to closes, closing this out. In fact, we're going to go take samples probably in the next month and send them down to North Coast Lab in Arcata. I think we're getting close to just saying bye-bye to this. But it's still on our radar. Muscle quarantine. We collect mussels, we send them to the Richmond Lab for testing for saxitoxin and domoic acid, paralytic shellfish poisoning, just so you realize, this is pretty serious. It's twice as strong as sarin, military nerve gas. And last year, the tribe, which was doing the mouth of the Clamath and Wilson Beach, got a sample, it's a hundred gram, four ounces, a serving, that tested over 3,000 micrograms. That's enough to kill 600 people. So we had, we had a really serious year. That's where we extended it right into the, I think, January 15th. We're actually getting readings now at Point St. George that are safe, but they're in the warning. They're not too far from getting dangerous. I don't know what the, what the ecology out there is.
Does that mean it can almost kill you? Is that what the?
You'll get sick probably and it does, everybody responds different. There are some people that will, at the very lowest level, could be killed, and there's some people that can eat this stuff and get sick, have liver dysfunction and then bounce back. The dose makes the poison. It's, you know, some people, one glass of wine and they're not fit to be behind the wheel. And then there's other people, people are 12 pack of beer and they drive better than they were sober, so. And this is a poison, so it's a toxicology issue.
We won't, we won't. We'll strike that last one if you don't mind.
We also collect marine plankton samples to be tested for Alexandrium and Sudanitia. These are the two key players. And we usually do it at the harbor, at the end of the B Street Pier and pretty interesting life out there. And we usually find some, we look at them in the microscope over at the lab at the waste treatment plant and they're here and the numbers aren't too bad right now. But if the numbers get really high, then we can expect maybe an early quarantine. We had it early last year, we started it April the 25th instead of May 1st. We'll see what happens. We tested, we're going to test it this month, so. Tattoo body piercing parlors. We don't have a lot of them. We have, usually we have two that are permanent and about three, four, sometimes five that are transient. They'll come in today, they'll be gone. Typically, they have a life expectancy of three to six months. We permit them, we inspect them. Exposure control plans are important, they must be in place, they must have a certification for it. Bloodborne pathogen training, because this is basically a good way for Hep B, Hep C, HIV, and a bunch of others you really don't want to know about, a form of tuberculosis to pass. We ensure the sanitation of instruments and facilities are in place and respond to complaints regarding tattoo body piercing parlors. Most of the complaints aren't from the customers, they're from the competition, but that's true of food complaints too. It's the guy next door that wants to make sure you're playing by the same rulebook that he is. Medical waste, this is a small program, but it may get larger. It's the regulation inspection of large and small quantity generators, including limited quality, quantity holders. The transfer stations working with us on the small ones, but we still have a hospital here. But we still have a hospital here, they're, they're, they are a large one. Everybody else is pretty small. And there's a company called Stericycle which has a milk run. They'll be here once a month, more often if needed, and they just pick up everybody and charge them a flat fee. It's not too involved, I don't know whether it ever will be, but it's one of our programs. One other program, which we don't, not, we're not officially in it, it's indoor air quality. We get mold complaints, and we have to talk with landlords, we have to talk with tenants, we have to go to the place. Mostly it's educational, we don't have regulatory authority, but I've got a five-page handout that I can give to landlords and tenants, and we can talk to them and address their concerns and tell them, here's what you need to clean up. I've been trying to get a list from the state for, you know, official mold remediators. Well, it took me three months for them to give me a response. I got a response two weeks ago from an early November complaint that says, "We don't have a list." So some contractors do know how to do it. And if people are going to do it, I can usually give them those names. They've done it before, I have experience in it, I can't vouch for them being perfect, but. And asbestos, we got to talk about asbestos, it comes up a problem, even with Dave and his blight thing, he'll come in, "Well, how many square feet do we, you know, if we're less than a hundred square, a hundred sixty square feet, and you take the pieces off and don't make them flab, we'll put them in those bags that you can get at the transfer station, soak them down." The homeowner can take fifty pounds at a time, but if it's a larger thing, then you got to get an asbestos contractor. Whenever Dave demolishes a building, we, we get questions. We have other duties as required, I think that some, we're not cops, we don't have heavy regulatory authority. We're not nannies either, but we have to hold people's hands from time to time, and that's why we get and end up doing other things, so. We can, well, we can answer questions if you have any, so.
Thanks very much, so questions? Supervisor McClure.
I have just a couple of questions, thank you for your report, because lots of good information. How many tanks do you think we still have in the ground?
Well, that's a good question. We have officially licensed forty-three underground petroleum tanks, and we have above-ground tanks, too. The county has above-ground, the city has above-ground tanks. Gas stations are going to above-ground tanks. Underground, I will tell you, I don't know, but I know there's a lot around, and Leon Perrault, my predecessor, told me that he thinks there's three hundred unknown mold tanks.
Wow, so we have forty-three known and possibly three hundred.
Yeah, well, the forty-three are currently, you know, they currently have a registration, we inspect them, they update, every year they have the annual monitoring certs. The other ones are ones that were probably gas stations at some time, way back in the past. Only one that I know about is the one on Fifth and H, it's under that vacant lot. I'm told that there's a tank there at some point, someone may remove it. No one's approached me for a permit, so.
It's interesting, because the Historical Society, we keep documented photographs of, and there were gas stations everywhere.
Yeah. There were something like twelve, I believe, tanks taken out the corner of Cooper and Highway one oh one north from each of the corners over time that were put there by various businesses.
Right. And then I have a question in relationship to people who have rentals.
Yes.
And discover that they've been turned into either growhouses or meth production, do you assist them on how to mitigate for that?
That's a law enforcement issue.
Oh, okay.
And Dave has been involved, and there is one that I'm familiar with, and we did get involved with it because his, his waste line was within about ten feet of a water well, drinking water well. We would get involved in that. We got another one with Dave that had to, had to do with the septic system, they, they moved to, they had broken the septic system by driving in motorhome.
Okay, thank you, nice job.
Questions, board members? No? Okay, thanks very much, excellent. I've got a quick question in the back there, you want to direct to the board? Sure.
Okay.
I do have a question of concern about hazardous materials storage. During the last round where we developed our, our, sort of general plan, and at the very end of process, an item came up that I don't think got dealt with, and I'm wondering when, how we might deal with that and what opportunity we could have. The community development plan for storage of, in, in the Smith River Plain, which, you know, is prone to flooding, although not this year probably. But the regulations in the hazardous, the building codes require buildings, structures that people live in, to be built a certain way, you know, with base level flood, you know, elevation. But the...
Okay, well, I'll get an answer to your question for you.
The question is, how can we deal with the fact that the vast amount of chemicals that are used in the lily industry are not stored in, in houses that have these requirements?
Okay, I will get it, I'll get an answer for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have building, Heidi, maybe you can address this along with environmental engineer, isn't there a storage facility permitting issue?
In the agricultural areas, there is a regulation that pesticides be stored in a lockable building, and sometimes it's small, so I set up a storage locker.
Sure.
And be placarded with pesticide storage and a skull and crossbones.
Okay.
And that's where they keep those things. Otherwise, we're looking at fuel primarily, gasoline and diesel to work the various farm equipment. And, and yes, it is a concern, and as most of the board probably is aware, that's why we have the Smith River Community Service District, because there was contamination some of the drinking water wells in the past.
Thanks, you want to chime in?
Well, but also, also to add that, there's, they pay a permit every, a permit fee every year for the inspection on that, so it, there is a requirement that they follow, anyway.
I'd also like to say that we're also working on this very subject with the County Agricultural Department, Jim Buckles, he has a relationship with the farmers in the area, so we're looking at it.
Good, perfect, thank you very much. I got one last one for you, because Fukushima, I know that they've got the radiation and the kelp, and they're expecting...
Well, just on, just to put it into perspective, I know we got a boat over here, and I know people got some trash on Vancouver Island and in Washington State and in Hawaii. But the fact of the matter is, what's leaking out of Fukushima is contaminated groundwater, and yes, within probably a half a mile of that outfall into the Pacific Ocean, it's dangerous. By the time, if it gets here, by the time it gets here, it will be not much higher than background. The fish that are caught in the ocean near Japan may be a problem. They're going to concentrate the, well, the, the pollutants of concern are sazium, radioactive sazium, which goes to our muscles, radioactive iodine, which goes to our thyroid, and radioactive strontium, which goes into our bones. The fish will pick it up, but I don't think we're going to have any problems in our seawater here. It's going to be so diluted, it's, it's six or seven thousand miles.
Okay. Ryan, I did have a quick question for you. If you've got septic's failing, then they bring you in for it?
Yes, and we usually get a, we get a, ask them to get a permit for, to repair it, and we have a list of about five or six guys that specialize in that in the county, and they can pick whoever they want. We, and usually they're pretty timely. Every now and then, they drag their heels and we have to remind them.
So you're involved in, if a facility has that, you guys would red tag it basically for?
We don't red tag it, we talk to the owner, we talk to the contractor, contractor gives us his, he draws up what he intends to do. Sometimes we need an engineer like Stover or Tromble, oftentimes we don't. We'll look at those plans, we'll approve the septic repair permit, and we will sometime, depending on the type of system, we'll make a preliminary inspection of the site, and we'll always do a final inspection.
And if it's code violation, it would go to code.
Code enforcement, and he would red tag it, so.
Right, yeah, we don't have red tag authority.
Okay.
All right, thanks very much. And Supervisor Sullivan wanted to take a three-minute break, but since he prolonged the presentation, he can wait. Oh, no, I guess we'll take a three-minute break, go ahead. Thank you very much for the presentation, excellent job.
You know what else people do that they do during the year? It's one of the...
Time items left to go. Item number 25 is to waive the full reading. Read by title only and adopt the ordinance to amend section 20.04, 20.46, and 20.48 of the Delmar County Code. And add reasonable accommodation and density bonus ordinances to the code as requested by Community Development. Randy?
Okay, we're back. These ordinances were first introduced two weeks ago, as I'm sure you all recall. For the benefit of members of the audience that may have not been here or were able to watch it, the ordinances relate in large part to our housing element update. This would have been the 2008 update. As part of that update, policies were adopted, goals were identified, and these are the implementation measures to actually adopt those goals that were adopted by the board. The other item that we've included with these ordinances has to do with local permitting processes. And that would be to amend our general provisions to allow for basically expanded opportunities for public uses, quasi-public uses, for basically what would boil down to disposal sites. That's kind of what we had in mind. We talked about last meeting that with the upcoming projects, STA projects on 199, 197, as well as who knows what's going to happen with Last Chance Grade, this would be a good kind of pre-planning sort of opportunity to look at those general provisions and hopefully facilitate some of those deeds before they become too critical. The ordinances are basically as they were suggested at the last meeting. We did have a discussion under the off-street parking ordinance, having to do with two-bedroom units and greater requiring two parking spaces. We've kind of picking up on the board, kind of leaning that direction, went ahead and amended the ordinance. That's what you have before you. We made that suggested modification. We talked about it being an alternative at the last meeting. But again, however, kind of reading between the lines, and everybody seemed to be pretty unified on that, and it seemed to be pretty logical from the staff perspective. We went ahead and made that suggested change. Other than that, the ordinances are ready to go. If there's any questions from the board or members of the public, we're definitely available to take those.
Okay. So it's unclear, I know we had a public hearing at the last time at the first reading, whether we're required to have a public hearing at this one, but error on the side of caution, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Any member of the public can speak on this at this time. Is there anybody who wants to speak to this? Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve and adopt ordinances, amend section 20.04, 20.46, and 20.48.020 of the Delmar County Code, and add reasonable accommodation and density bonus ordinances to the code.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions by board members? No?
That does have the suggested modifications of the two-bedroom, two-parking spots?
The parking off-site.
Yeah, the ordinance that you have in your agenda today includes that change.
Yeah, thank you.
Correct. Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes.
Which brings us to item number 26, which is just to waive the full reading. Read by title only and adopt the ordinance to amend section 21.00.030 of the Delmar County Code as requested by Community Development. Randy?
I don't know why I keep sitting down. I should just stand right here. This ordinance also has to do with the 2008 housing element update. This was processed separately from the Title 20 ordinances because this would affect change to our Title 21, which is our coastal zoning ordinance. Unlike the previous ordinances, this would have to go to the California Coastal Commission for certification. We've had staff tentatively review what we are proposing. They also looked at it through the housing element update, and we don't anticipate any issues with this ordinance as it's written. But if anything comes up, which it may, we'll certainly be bringing it back.
All right, thank you. So then, once again, I will open up the public hearing again on this item. Any member of the public that wishes to comment, please step forward. And seeing no, none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board, and I'd entertain a motion.
So move to adopt ordinance to allow for second residential units within specific residential zone districts in the coastal zone, and approve resolution transmitting this approval to the California Coastal Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any member of the board have comments or questions? Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes.
And with that, we're going to jump to item number 28, which is review and approve the treasurer's statement of investment policy, since she's been sitting there so patiently, and adopt a resolution, Board of Supervisors, regarding such.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The last meeting, I had brought forward our investment policy, and there was some concern about the amount of money that was in LAFE, and I had stressed that the midterm fund that we have where I can go a little bit requires like a 30-day notice, so I get concerned about having that liquidity, excuse me. So it was suggested that I add some language to the portfolio to, for those needs that are outside of our normal, what we can expect to come out either, you know, quarterly or on a monthly basis, I put a provision that is asking that if a department or school district, excuse me, needs money out of the treasury in excess of a million dollars, that is not part of our normal schedule, that the treasury needs 30 days' notice. So I had included that in the policy. I also like to share with the board, this is from the State Controller's Office, and it lists all the counties, the left-hand side of the applicant, the counties on the right-hand side is where the county portfolios are. And if you'll notice, Delmar County is almost right in the middle as far as portfolio earnings throughout the state. So I just, I thought that would be a bit of good information to you, that I know that the earnings, you know, I have a safe liquid and interest-bearing portfolio, although you might not necessarily be overly impressed with the interest earnings. As you can see by the chart, we are right in the middle with a lot of the other counties within the state, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Members of the board, you got any questions or comments before I entertain the motion?
Yes, Chair, what's Yuba County and San Bernardino County doing, and also Sutter County, there's some glaring jumps in there. Can we look at that model? Is there a possibility to move in that direction, get a little higher interest rate?
You know, Calusa County at the top. From what I've been told, he invests outside the state requirements of under five years. He goes out beyond that, so that's why he is quite high. The other counties, I certainly have a relationship with them, and I can certainly, you know, take a look and see what they're doing that we might be able to improve on. But they are, they probably have a lot more money than we do have as well.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I've got some questions. Is there a reason we're keeping 57% of the portfolio liquid at $22 million? We've only got about 22% invested, and even within your parameters and your investment policy, it does allow you to go further out on some of the stuff that you do have? I mean, I realize we're at historic low rates. I mean, Eisenhower was president, last time rates were this low. But within the parameters of safety, liquidity, and return, it seems like we should be getting a lot better return than we are right now.
Well, as I had indicated the last meeting, a lot, a large portion of monies had come in from the school bond sales and then our tax dollars. So I don't like to just throw everything out in the same month and just go out and, you know, buy a bunch of securities in one month. I'd like to kind of stagger it out, so that's what I would like to work on, so that's...
Yeah, but my question is, even accounting with the school districts thing, which was four and a half, five million in that range, if you move 14 million over from LAFE just to Cal Trust, it would bring the return from $36,400 you're getting on it right now up to $99,400 over the course of the year. That's $63,000 additional, still liquid within 30 days' notice. I guess my question is why, especially in the Stimson funds, why we're not investing further out? It seems like we're leaving a lot of money on the table, and to this budget, $100,000 is key. We need that money.
Can I ask for clarification? Is what you are talking about allowed for in the investment portfolio, investment?
Yeah, as far as I know.
Okay, so let's...
It's for the policy.
I know there's a, and I'm not trying to necessarily cut it short, but I know that there is a dialogue that's allowed for in the treasury oversight, as well as the debt advisory. If we can stay on topic to focus on the, what's at issue here, which is the statement of investment policy, and if there's something in the policy rather than the practice, I think let's do the policy first and then let's get into practice. So, do we have an issue on policy? Then can I get a motion on the policy?
Yeah, I don't know if we have an issue, but is, do we need to narrow the policy to get what Supervisor Sullivan is talking about?
No, I mean, the policy allows for that. My concern is...
I understand that it allows for it, but we're not maximizing our benefit.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, do we need to narrow the policy? Do we need to...
Is there a mechanism to...
Yeah, that's what...
Not just to make it allows for it, but commands it, I guess, or...
Well, I mean, if we narrow the policy to a certain direction, then if she would, it would have to stay in that guideline. I don't know. I, you know, I don't...
Well, this is two parts we're talking about in this. One is to approve the policy, and the other is to adopt the resolution, the board delegating investment authority to the county treasurer. So there's two parts to this motion that we're talking about.
Okay. Can we get a motion on the policy?
I'll move to approve the treasurer's 2014 statement of investment policy, and also to adopt the resolution, the board delegating investment authority to the county treasurer as requested.
Second.
Now, discussion? Supervisor Sullivan?
Yeah, I don't, my question's...
Like I said, I don't like to put all my eggs in one basket. I mean, I know, you know, I have never lost dime one of the county's money in investment, so if you look at your own portfolios or perhaps your clients' own portfolios, I doubt you can say the same thing.
You've got all your eggs in one basket. You have it in LAFE.
I, but I'd like to, I'd like to ladder that out. I don't like to just go out all in the one month and buy multiple two, three, four-year bonds. So I am, I apologize if it's not as expeditious as you'd like to see, and I will try and improve on it.
You're not even laddering though. 57% of the portfolio is liquid. So, yeah, I guess that's my question, is why we're not laddering out, because you've only got 22% of the portfolio laddered. The rest of it is sitting in liquid money, not making very much interest for the county at this point. So that's my concern, and it's a concern I've brought up in the past, so it's not a new question. It's, the question is why we're not using more of the tools that are in there, and even moving more money to Cal Trust as an example, or getting more CDs in the process. It seems with the exception of the school districts' money, which could be less than 30 days, the rest of this stuff, you should have more than adequate 30 days' notice that we can go to something and get a little better yield on it, because we're not getting very good yield on this thing.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
You know, addressing that question, and I have a holdings report for the month ending December 31st, and this is, I guess, 22% of the, basically of the investment, and it shows the market, the acquisition cost and current market is $73,000 less than what we started. Why does it, why is it reporting that when you say you've never lost anything?
Because if the county needed to sell at this time, then you would, you would get, in other words, if your bond, if you don't hold your bond to maturity, you're going to get a loss if you have to sell it prematurely. So that's why, that's reflected there.
Okay.
That's, that's pretty common. If you want to take them off the table early...
No, I understand that, but it's not, I guess it doesn't show what the maturity should end up being, I guess. At maturity, what there's, what the funds, when the funds mature, and what that value, I guess it shows the maturity date, but it doesn't show what the fund should be producing at that point.
It just doesn't reflect the interest, because it would mature at what the acquisition cost, it would mature at that, plus the interest accrued during that time period.
Okay, so what we did do was a step, a positive step, by putting in the policy that a 30-day call, so you don't have to remain as liquid as you had been with the LAFE. We can invest more in Cal Trust. There is the flexibility in the investment policy to allow for what we are requesting to be done, and perhaps what we also need to do is just say on a quarterly basis, would you please come back, keep us updated so we can keep track of what's going on? And then, of course, there's the Treasury Oversight Committee that can work on that with you on a monthly basis as well.
Okay.
Any other direction there?
No, I just want to say, Dawn, that if we look at the top of this chart here, the goal should be to move us up the ladder. And if you can do that and come back and report to us, that's an improvement, and that's good news. Nobody's getting much interest on their money these days, I appreciate that. So if we can have a conversation with Calusa, or Sutter, or San Bernardino, those top counties, and see what they're doing, and it's working for them, I'd like to see if it can work for us.
Okay.
Supervisor McClure, do you have something to say?
Yes, I did. I want to tell you, Dawn, that I appreciate the work that you do, and I think the 30-day thing is going to help us, but I also understand your caution of wanting to ladder things out over time, so when things come due, it's not all in the same month. So thank you.
The other thing I would say is, I don't think we paid it off this last year, so that helped boost up the revenues. But strategies, much like we had with the Family Resource Center, where we funded that at, I believe, a 4% or 5% interest, amortized longer, but doing payable in a five-year, those kind of strategies are excellent. And if we could find some more of those, I think that'd be extremely beneficial. And I know you have cash flow issues, that's where we need to work together on that. With that, let's go ahead and pull the vote, please.
Well, Chair, I mean, it's, in fairness to the treasurer, you're not going to get 4% or 5% interest right now. They're just not out there right now. My concern is that we get some of the super liquid earning, a little over a quarter percent interest, that we get it into even 75 basis points or 71 basis points.
Well, I got news for you. There's opportunities at the airport. There's opportunities with economic development, where we can take some money that you're pushing into LAFE, and if it's a governmental entity that has some strong backing, you can be getting 3% at least, as opposed to the point something at LAFE. So let's look at those partnerships with other governmental entities that have infrastructure and economic development needs. It's worked in the past.
And that would go to our financial planning, we have a committee for that, so that should be brought to them.
Great. Good. Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes, and I apologize, apparently the public wants to weigh in.
Now that you have all voted to do this, I'm going to request that you not vote to do it. I hate to see any of the authority of the Board of Supervisors delegated to a single person, the county treasurer. You have some great ideas here. You've brought up some points and really come forward. I don't like to see authority that's been given to you delegated to others. It dilutes what you're supposed to be doing. I can call Dave Finnegan and ask him questions. I would request that you at least revote. Thank you.
Well, I'll be happy to revote, but I might also point out that when the treasurer tax collector is elected, she is elected under the auspices that she will also be doing the investments for the county, so you and your constituents have that opportunity. While we can try to take that away, that's not the intention of what the people that voted was. So pull the vote again, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes.
And there was a... Chair, I, one of the things, I think one of the issues popped up on this thing that is the reason that is, the treasury oversight only meets once a year now. And I think it's essential that the treasury oversight meet a little more frequently based on where we're at with interest rates and based on the current portfolio.
Well, I suggested we do it quarterly, so I think you're on that committee.
Okay.
And let's get together with Dawn and the rest of the members of that committee and get it done. I think the school district sits on it, too.
I just wanted to point out that, yes, the part, the policy did reduce from quarterly to annually, only because we were having a hard time having a quorum. However, it is left open that any member of the committee can request a meeting at any time.
Sure. Thanks very much. Okay, well, we're going to switch this up a little bit, then have a, we talked about Senator Lamalfo, we talked about Senator Nielsen, maybe he wants to be addressed to Senator Feller, but why don't we get a report from Scott Feller, who is liaison to Senator Nielsen's office?
Scott Feller, Mr. Representative, Senator Jim Nielsen, Chairman of the Board, questions are pretty short. The senator has all those different alternatives addressed before, so he can appear...
Updates as needed. And currently, the water is the big issue in the state. And we've designated a point person down in the Capitol office to handle most of the water issues, but there are four introduced water bonds right now for the legislature. Two were rumored proposals, and that does not include the 2009 button that's already on the ballot. So Jim has weighed in with Senator Summiman, I mean, with the Summiman Logue's proposal, which is a $5.8 billion bond that allocates $4.8 billion for surface storage and one billion for clean water projects. The problem we have with water is storage, and collecting it when we have excess and redistributing it. And there has not been a new dam built in 35 years in the state. And there's lots of areas, canyons, so to speak, that you could develop fairly short or even earth dams to store water from Sacramento River, Feather River, American River, other areas, and then redistribute that when we need it during the summer. So that's going to be the senator's big issue, or pushes for off-site storage, and going in on that. He's aware of High Route 199, 197, and the Richardson and Grove lawsuit, because the projects on 199 and 197 are part of what he looks at as rural connectivity, and he sends his congratulations to you for the broadband project. That's one of his big issues, he's pushed all throughout all of his rural counties. We're also working with Department of Fish and Wildlife and the state parks, so there'll be a meeting in his office of the directors later on this year to look at lake or wildlife area. The last time they wrote the draft, their management plan that was written for both agencies was 1985. Since then, Talwha Dune State Park came into play. There could be some minor tweaking of the land boundaries between the state park and lake or wildlife area for more appropriate uses, such as hunting would come under fishing yam or fish and wildlife purview, and artifact restoration and protection would come under state parks. Because the original 10,000 acres that was purchased and donated property, it's never been changed, once that happened in the early 70s, or late 70s, 1975, '76. So we're kind of working with them on that. AB 109, the senator was the former chair of the California Board of Prison Terms. He's a strong supporter of tweaking AB 109, because it's having such a disastrous effect on county jails up and down the state. It's just, the medical costs, the cost of incarcerations has just become exorbitant, and it's been put back on the counties without appropriate funding. So he's working on trying to resolve all of that area. He is not in favor of and adamely opposed the three-judge decision yesterday on early release of prisoners. Some of them are, they don't even meet the 999 requirements anymore, and...
Clarification, the three-judge panel extended for two years till February of 2016.
The number, but they're going to allow for early release of other high-risk prisoners, and they're going to have to push that back out. And so he doesn't, he's not in favor of that at all. He does send his congratulations to the board and the community for disaster planning. Of course, he gets regular reports from us, and the public may not be aware of it, but when we did our first community evacuation in 2010, it was the only place in the U.S. that did that. And we're doing another one, and we've become the model for other counties in the state and for other states to look at. There's been inquiries to Cindy about this, and it's pretty impressive, actually. The hospital, Jim sits on a hospital board down in the Sacramento area, so he's very aware of what hospital needs are. He's dedicated to making sure that we have appropriate housing, I mean, appropriate health care in our community, wherever it may lead us to. He stays aware of all facts, and no decision was made on who or what, just that we have good health care in our community. So with that, one of the things that, oh, and on item 32, I would suggest that you add Senator Nielsen to that list, because you might as well use all the tools in your tool bag. So with that, I'd like to ask Supervisor Sullivan to come on down. So on behalf of the California State Senate, Senator Jim Nielsen, a certificate of recognition to Mike Sullivan as Chairman of the Delmar County Board of Supervisors, 2012, 2013, and acknowledgement of your community's support for the many worthwhile contributions you have made to benefit the lives and livelihoods of the citizens of Delmar County. And we talked a little bit about the state of Jefferson, and the senator is not opposed to the state of Jefferson concept. There's a lot of devil in the details on that, but he believes, and it's a strong expression of the profound frustration of the community with representation in Sacramento and dealing with state agencies. And at a bigger, at a larger... And at a bigger, at a larger level that he looks at in Sacramento, you've got 38 legislators in L.A. County alone of 120 in the state. And if Orange County, L.A. County, San Diego team up, there's nothing we can do. It just can't. There are some little inroads you can make into that, and CSAC is one of those. The California State Association of Counties, which we've never had a chairman from Delmar County before, so, Mr. Finnegan, would you come on down? So, on behalf of Senator Nielsen, a special recognition to David Finnegan for your participation as the President of the California State Association of Counties, 2013. As your California State Senator, I want to congratulate you on your dedication to your state and county. With that, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Scott. And would you please thank the Senator? That was quite unexpected and quite appreciated, so thank you very, very much.
I did owe that also, so, thank you.
Let's go back up the agenda. Discuss number 29, take possible action regarding the letter of opposition to Red Flat Nickel Corporation, planning to drill core samples in the North Fork of the Smith River staff. Are you going to take that?
There may be speakers. I will explain, this was submitted by the Smith River Advisory Council. The letter outlines what their issue is at this point. From discussing that with the STRAC representative, there wasn't a lot of information available yet, and there, I believe there will be more information coming down the line. At this point, I believe this is primarily drilling of core samples.
Okay, there was, I did receive, and I think we all probably did, a copy from the Curry County Board of Commissioners in opposition to this that was sent to the Gold Beach Ranger District citing the watersheds and whatnot. So, the, you have the letter from the Smith River Advisory, you have the notation that Curry County unanimously opposed it, and can I get a motion?
Yes, I would like to move that we send a letter of opposition for the potential mining on Smith River. It's not the right language, is it? Is that, will that work? Oh, there's no second?
I thought it was just about cores, cores.
Core samples.
It is.
Which, which I don't quite understand what the issue with core sampling is, but I don't, I don't have any information on what they're, what they do as far as their core sampling, so I'm a little confused as to what we're deciding on what they're going to do and not going to do.
You know, what might be appropriate, since what we are advocating for is something that is to take place in Oregon and a type of core drilling that we are not completely vetted on, that we maybe include this Curry County Board of Commissioners in everybody's agenda and get some input from the Smith River Advisory group to put it back on the next agenda, to take an action, when we're just a little bit more informed and know exactly what we're doing. Okay? So, that consensus on that? All right, it'll be back on the next agenda with more supporting documentation. Thank you. And with that, we're going to hit number 27, which is to discuss and take possible action to direct staff to prepare an advisory ballot measure regarding whether the Board of Supervisors should adopt a declaration supporting the proposed separation from the State of California and the formation of a 51st state for a possible placement on the 2014 general election ballot. And let's kick off the discussion. I had, as part of it, I had asked staff to consult with Tahama County, and, and I guess part of the discussion here can be, not only do you want to do it, when do you want to do it, what do you want it to say, the timing of the discussion, do you want to take action today, do you want to take action after workshop, do you want to take action at all? It's on the agenda, because as part of the other discussion, we heard from people, they thought that people should vote on it. I said I will put it on the agenda for our discussion of possible action. So, here it is.
Well, currently, the action that you see before you today is the same action that Tahama did take. They did have a discussion. It is online, you can hear the audio of that. The issues before us right now, as far as staff is concerned and the direction that we've been taking, is to deal with the financial implications at the county level, while also attempting to deal with some of the financial implications coming from a separation from the State of California and dealing with federal, federal pass-through and state revenues. So, at this point, that's the action that we're undertaking for the 27th workshop. And as far as the, you know, there were, Tahama had a $30,000 estimate regarding financial. I think that's probably low, because it is a difficult issue. There's a lot of assumptions at this point, and we're trying to track down as much of the information through any of the state agencies that we can obtain for their budgets. How that pertains to Delmar County, how that pertains to our current level of services, because I would assume at this point that one of the larger factors would be maintaining a level of service that we currently have and/or augmenting that, and then looking at what other implications there may be, if in fact that revenue source can't maintain that, that level of service locally. So, that's what we're developing at this point. I don't know that Tahama has gotten there yet, based on the information I have. You know, they were looking at that.
Okay. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, I would, I would suggest that we take no action until at least after our workshop on the 28th. And then I am even more inclined to suggest that when a ballot measure is want, when a group of proponents want to put something on the ballot, I would like to see them have the proper signatures that are required by the clerk to make sure that the electorate, the voters of the community have signed the petition. I know they held, they held a thing up and said, "We have all of these signatures," but I have no way, and the, and the Board of Supervisors has no way, to verify that those signatures are registered voters in our community. And I think that that work needs to be done by the proponents, because when I hear that there's a thousand signatures, there's about 12,000 to maybe 15,000 voters in the community, it doesn't rise to the level of putting something on a ballot. And I think that, you know, the more I thought about it, I thought if we were, that could be a very slippery slope, where we could all of a sudden be putting things on a ballot, making an assumption, because somebody had a large meeting and somebody went door-to-door and got signatures, therefore, you make the conclusion that that is the will of the people to have the vote. I'm not even sure it's there. The number of calls I'm getting are people that are saying, "Have you guys, the devil is in the details." And when you ask a question about, "Well, how will you maintain the roads?" "Well, we'll do that later. We'll have a committee. We'll do..." And so, to me, it needs to be fully vetted, and one of the first steps in vetting that is to make sure that the electorate have signed on, on a validated process that we have adopted over, since California has had, since California became a state and we have a process of how things get on a ballot. I believe that we should ask the proponents of this to put it on the ballot, but they put it on the ballot through a process of application of signatures, and it goes through the clerk's office, because it needs to be very clearly written. It needs to have absolute detail that the voters are the people who have signed the petition. So, I would ask that we not take an action to put it on a ballot, but we, we hear the information about, we can assist the public in hearing the information at our workshop, and we can ask the proponents of this process to hit the street and do the process of how you put something on the ballot for a ballot initiative. Thank you.
Okay. It sounded, you know, it sounded like there was three possible motions in there, one to table, one to take no action, and one to direct the initiative process. I got to tell you, before I recognize anybody else, I had a bit of a quandary, the more I thought about it. If we put it on the agenda to vote for the resolution, you're going to get people to vote yes or no, based on the perceived State of Jefferson. And if you put it broader, saying, "Should you be part of the creation of a 51st state?" You're going to get a segment that may vote yes, when they wouldn't have, for the State of Jefferson, or no, vice versa. So, it's appealing to those that want to narrow it, as opposed to those that want to have a broad base. Some of those discussions will surface at the workshop, just based on all the supervisors, if you don't have it already, you soon will, a copy of the legislative, the LAO's office, Legislative Analyst's Office, based on what the State of Jefferson would look like if it was akin to the initiative that was going to split the state into six different areas. I think that's a little bigger Jefferson than what's being proposed, but nobody's really sure. So, I'm sort of, I'm sort of up in the air. I'm the one that opened my mouth and said, "Okay, if you want it on the ballot, we'll put it on the ballot." Now comes the question, "Well, what, okay, what?" But Supervisor Gitlin, you got something there?
Well, first of all, I would concur that I think we should delay any action until we have our workshop. There's a lot that has yet to be determined. We don't really know the size of the State of Jefferson. I'm hearing 13 counties, and each county is checking in. We have a resolution that was presented by a very well-organized group of volunteers who, in a very short period of time, accumulated a lot of signatures. We've also had support in the triplicate on a poll, 81 to 19% or something like that. If we go the route of a plebiscite, I think that we should have the resolution in the way it was presented to our Board of Supervisors, which doesn't choose to vote on it, per se, but wishes to put it before the voters. So, I think this should have some teeth in it, but no decision to be made until after we have our 227 meeting.
Okay. It, for the point of moving us along, because I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but I heard a motion from Supervisor McClure and a potential second from Supervisor Gitlin. If you will make that in the form of the motion, we can move forward with discussion.
Point of information, though, is if, sorry to interrupt. Mine is more of, if we choose not to put it on the ballot today, one, do we have time to put it on June's ballot? If we do have time to put it on June's ballot, if we vote today, if we extend and do it after the 27th, do we have time to put it on June's ballot?
Okay, that is a point of information. Jay?
I'll have to consult with the Elections Clerk.
And I can, I can answer that. I just had a discussion with Alyssa, and she said, "If it happened very soon, it can be put on the June ballot."
Very soon's what, though?
I would say today. And it, because it's going to take other work, other than that.
Otherwise, it would be November.
Otherwise, it will be November. And if I can just make a couple of points here, this is an advisory vote, not an initiative, from what I understand. This would be an advisory vote. And to go through the process, which we were asked not to do for the fair, they wanted to have their issue put on the ballot and not have to go through the process of getting the petitions, but then we want another group to go through the process? I think it's a little unfair to think that one group should and one group shouldn't. I have no problem with putting it to the vote of the people. I think that's, I think if you want to find out what the people really think, give it to the people. I have no problem on voting on it. I have no problem on putting it on the ballot.
And I, and I heard that same thing from the people, that, you know, a lot of them wanted to vote on it. And the reason, one of the primary reasons that I was going to advocate putting it on the ballot is allowed for the time, for the information that has not yet been developed. And when you put something on the ballot, you have to have the pros and the cons and the fiscal analysis. And much has came out in the LAO, so it allowed for a greater information and better discussion. I wasn't aware it could hit June or November at that time.
The last time we had had a discussion with the Elections Clerk was about a month ago, and she was saying it had to be done very quickly, but there was not a deadline given, so I'll get a specific date.
Okay. Supervisor, was there a motion on the floor?
I would like to move to table to take no action until after the workshop.
Was there a second?
But that didn't answer my question. I guess, I guess I'd, before I'd vote on whether we tabled or not, I'd want to know what kind of deadline we're running up on the June, because I think it's unfair to the folks, just as Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, the fair is a very important part of the community, and we did put it through the process. It's an advisory vote. It's not, it doesn't obligate the county to anything, per se. It just says the majority of the people in the community want to be part of the State of Jefferson, not part of California, if that's the way the vote goes.
And under those circumstances, I would like to see this on a June ballot, rather than wait all the way to November. So, if there's a matter of time, then I think at the very least, we should have it on the June primary election, rather than the November.
Can we get an answer to that question, though, before we vote? I would request, is Alyssa available?
While we're waiting for that connection.
Go ahead.
While we're waiting, I'd like to comment. I think that historically, citizen-run initiatives or advisory votes are done by signature, where you have government entities, such as a school district, a fire district, a, a public entity, they have always came, come, they come through the Board of Supervisors. You're trying to act, do an apple and an orange thing here, because they have their own financial controls. And this is something that is asking us to, to do a citizen-designed initiative, as opposed to an entities initiative. Like, if the school board came here, we wouldn't demand that the school board take signatures to put something on for a bond issue. We wouldn't ask that the fire district in Gasky put, have to have signatures to put it on, because those entities are, we have a government-to-government relationship. These people that we have, that have followed a direction, because I have done pounds of research, that have followed a direction by a group of people who were fairly disgruntled in a small community about water rights. And it has exploded from there, and I appreciate that explosion, and I appreciate the momentum. But we don't have, we have the fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of the State of California. Before we spend money, we need to know that those citizens that are in Delmar County, that are voting citizens, have decided that, yes, we want this to be on the ballot.
And I got to, again, just say, I, the timing, I really hadn't considered. It wasn't important to me to get to the June ballot, as opposed to the November ballot. What was important to me was to allow for enough time to get the information out there and have that available to the people, should they choose to vote on it. And I'm still, it sounds like we're stuck in a time crunch here, but that was never my intention. And if a workshop hopefully is going to be an eye-opener on several of the issues, I would hate to vote to put something on the agenda, that after the workshop shows that we were complete idiots for considering putting it on the agenda, that the Board should have taken action themselves. It's my thoughts.
I agree.
But...
Do we have public comment, Alyssa?
Well, let's, I'll, I will go ahead. There's a motion on the table?
No second.
To?
There was no second.
Supervisor McClure made a motion to table the issue until after the workshop.
Okay. I'm going to second it for discussion purposes. Is there public comment on this? Yes, please.
Craig Strong, I appreciate your discussion on this subject and, and your cautious approach. And my only point right now is, I, creating a new state or even making a declaration to such effect is a big thing, obviously. I have no idea why there's any rush to get a June ballot, as opposed to the November one, considering all that's involved, and that this whole process, if it moves forward, is going to take years. I think that taking no action until you are fully vetted on the issue is certainly the appropriate course. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to weigh in? Yes, sir. And then Mr. Feller, and then...
Tim Mitchell, live in the county. I've looked into this forming of the State of Jefferson, or at least letting the State of California know that we still exist up here. I've spent a couple of times in a hospital in San Francisco, and when you talk to the nursing staff, the doctors that come in, "Where do you live?" I say, "Well, I live in Northern California." You know, the 400 miles that's exist above San Francisco. The people down there, we lost our representation in 1964. Whatever they want to do, they can do. And I can see in 10 years from now, if the water stays the way it is, a dam on the North Fork of the Smith River and all the water being piped to... the north fork of the Smith River and all the water being piped to Southern California, because we don't have enough representation to tell them no. I'd like to see this go forward. It's an advisory vote. We're not saying we're going to do it. There's a lot more to this process, and I hope every single person on the Board checks into it, digs into it, and looks into it with an open mind. We need this. Thank you.
Mr. Feller.
Scott Feller, resident of Del Norte County. Point of clarification to yours on the water rights, you're correct. And when Gabe Warren show up at your doorstep and say, sign this permit, or you lose your water rights, and you're going to a lawsuit, and fishing game is sued, and they lose in a very big way, people don't feel you represented. And these were 100-year-old ranches and farms in the Scott Valley. Yes, that was the driver for a lot of this. Looking at the numbers, the metrics of this, you have under 12,000 registered voters are pretty close to that in the county. And if you got 1,000 signatures that are gathered, they said registered voters, that's, you know, a little under 10%. And even if the normal 15% signatures are invalidated, if you're running for office, you still have 750, 80, 150 people. You can't get that many people to agree on anything in this community, usually. So my thought is, it's only an advisory vote. And this is a work in progress, and you're going to be gathering more information. It's going to take years. So to be out in the forefront to say that you're representing the people, and a significant portion of them have come to you saying, we'd like to see the rest of the county, what their feelings are, that's kind of what you're elected to do. And so I would think it'd be in your best interest to put it as an advisory vote, it's non-binding, and gather information at every step of the process, all along the way, and move forward. Thank you.
I was just going to ask, Scott, in relation to June or November?
I don't know. I really don't know.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You know, you've been in this, you've been in this game long enough to know that if somebody stands in front of you and says, I have 1,000 signatures, the first thing you say is trust but verify.
Right.
And there is no process for trusting but verifying, because the signatures were not gathered in the, in the fashion that the clerk requires. They were on a piece of paper that ran flat, that didn't have the place to check, that didn't have the dual signatures. So trust, verify. Why aren't we asking them to get registered voters according to the clerk's standards, the standards of California election?
I, you're absolutely correct. I did watch them when they're in front of Safeway, that they had their little stand set up, and there was two guys there collecting signatures, and I kind of stood off to the side, talking to somebody else. And their questions were correct. Are you a registered voter of Del Norte County? Would you be interested in signing a petition to put this on the ballot, or however they're phrasing it? But it would be the same way if I'm running for office, and I'm going out to gather signatures. Are you a registered voter? And it's a different format.
But it goes one step further. It has a format that has your signature, it has your address, it has your printed, your printed name, your address, and your signature. And then the Elections Clerk has to actually look at those and verify.
If it was a formal proceeding to take that to a vote, to be put on the ballot, yes. When they're requesting it of you guys to put it as an advisory, as an advisory vote, why do you want to make it so onerous and go back to a formal process where it's advisory? It's just collecting information.
Well, let's not get into a debate. Let's do public commentary.
Jay does have a point of information he's going to answer for.
Pardon me?
He had an answer on the date.
He knows the numbers.
I was able to talk to the Elections Clerk. She's down there working right now. But March 10th would be the latest date to receive all of the information that would be required by the clerk to put it on a ballot.
Okay. So there's time. Go ahead.
Norma Williams, President of the Del Norte County Employees Association, SCIU. As a public sector employee, I do have some concern as to the rather odd rush to move forward with this on an advisory measure without all of the proper, proper information, even not even having all of the information gathered so that you can meet at your workshop. I wasn't even aware that you were going to be even meeting at a workshop to address this information. I hope that you take into consideration the public sector employees who do currently provide services to this, to the community, to all the citizens in this community. We receive state as well as federal assistance in providing those services. A lot of those services are not just, as you can heard today, you even heard today some of the services, some of the partnerships, governmental partnerships, that a lot of the public sector employees have with both state and federal agencies in providing very vital services to this community. Where I work at in Health and Human Services, we provide services in mental health, in public health, some of which involve for children, which I know Supervisor Spinnin, again, you're very, you know, it's very close to your heart, in terms of providing vital medical services to children in terms of health examinations, even services, medical services for children with special needs, which is something very close to my heart. What would happen in a state of Jefferson? What would happen to those children? What would happen to the citizens in this community as you have this mad rush to do away with government and the very agencies and safety nets that we have in place to help our citizens who are in want and need? That's what I'm concerned about, not just the people, not just the workers that I represent, because obviously I would be concerned on any loss of employment as a result. I don't see the mad dash and waste of county dollars as well as time in putting on an advisory measure at this, at this point. I strongly, strongly urge that you wait until you have your workshop, until you have all of the full information. As the CIO just told you, you do have some time until, until March. I suggest that you take that time and not take any action today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Go ahead. You raised your hand. Vicki, you want to speak too?
I just have a comment. If JOS would put this much energy into getting the people that represent us to make provisions in the laws that they enact for up here, we might get somewhere instead of separating from the state. I just don't see any, I'm glad you guys are being cautious about this. Those Board of Supervisors that signed away their counties, oh my God, there was no, one county had 220,000 people, 500 people showed up at the Board of Supervisors, and, oh yeah, let me sign that declaration. You don't know what you're saying. I know for one thing, that they only need six counties to sign before they go before the lawmakers and say, oh, we've got six counties interested in separating from the state.
And the topic we're discussing is whether to put it on the ballot or not?
Yes, don't put it on the ballot.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Eileen Cooper. I attended the, what I thought was going to be a workshop. They invited the community to find out information. And what I got was a piece of paper about that size, saying, local control, local control, local control. I didn't get answers to how it would affect our daily life. I didn't, and, and all the benefits, and all...
The motion that I hope you're speaking to is whether or not to put it on the ballot.
I, I, I don't think we should put it on the ballot. And the reason why, first, I agree that it, this is a citizen-based issue, and we're not even sure if it's citizens from this area.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Can I get a call? What is the motion again?
The motion is to table it or to take no action until after the workshop.
So it's not before they can put it on the ballot?
No.
Oh, I'm Victoria Vicki, the first, oops, I'm sorry. I didn't even have you on.
No, just for point of clarification, the action, the discussion and possible action has to do with whether to put it on the ballot. The motion at hand is whether or not to table it till after the workshop. Go ahead.
Simply put, I support the state of Jefferson. I would like to see it pushed forward today by you voting to accept the declaration. I think you're cautious people, and I respect that. However, if you can't vote yes today, then please do whatever it takes to get it on the soonest ballot possible, so that people can start hammering out these details that you're concerned about. We don't know how many people might be joining together, since we don't know, I mean, if it's just us, and it could be, remember, the road could fall away. And thank you Supervisor McClure for reminding the people down south that we are part of California. But that road goes away, we aren't part of California. Everything comes through Oregon. Bottom line, I want to see it go forward ASAP. I definitely want it on no later than the June ballot. And I think that if you vote on it today, and it turns out to be a boondoggle, February's workshop will tell.
Okay. Any other public comment? Then I'm going to bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Sullivan?
I, a couple things. One, just so there's clarification in the audience, what we are talking about right now, the motion on hand is to table and make a decision at a future meeting whether we put it on the ballot. So that's the motion Supervisor McClure made. The second clarification, if it is put on the ballot, it does not mean the county automatically signs the declaration. We'd still have to bring it back to the Board to vote. So, but what it would do, if it is on the, on the, on the ballot, is we would get the best survey of the constituents in our area, whether they want to proceed and be part of it or not. I have on my side of it, I have looked at over 200 signatures that I know are true, are accurate signatures in my district, not counting the other districts. So if I look at 200, assume, you know, we're getting pretty close to the 10% figure that Mr. Feller brought up earlier, anyway. So in terms of, I, I'm comfortable waiting until after the workshop to vote on it, but if we do do that, I would like to have the ability to put it on the 28th agenda, if the Chair would honor that and put it on for a vote as an advisory, if that's the, if that's the route we go.
Supervisor Hammison?
Yeah. And just a clarification, it's, it's just not the action that we take today that takes the time to put it on the ballot. There's other work that has to be done. Is that not correct? The County Council has to do some stuff. And so what timeframe are you looking at?
I, it would be a crunch, honestly, to get it done. I mean, it could be done if I put it on the top burner and just do it. But it's going to take some time to draft the ordinance that would have to be drafted for your approval to place it on, or the, or, no, it is...
Just an advisory-type vote, right? So we're not talking about any special...
Well, if you're doing an advisory, it probably wouldn't take as much time as it would if you were going for the...
I mean, we don't have to go through the same analysis we would if it was an ordinance or if it was some sort of initiative.
Why wouldn't you?
Yeah. No, I'm not saying that you don't, but I'm just saying that you don't have to. Not the same that we can. So in our brief conversation, there's also a fiscal analysis that has to be done.
That's correct.
Yeah. So there's, there's a timeframe that we have to work with. It's not just that March 10th deadline, but it's also coordinating with the Supervisor meeting. So if you're talking about the 28th, you have 10 days and two weekends in there. So you're, you know, you're talking about five days. I think that's enough time to get it on the June ballot. And it's not that I'm in a big push to do this. I'm just afraid that if we don't put it out to the people to vote on it, which I think they should, that we're going to get more pressure as supervisors to put it on our agenda to vote on it anyway. So why not, why not put it out to the people so we can find out what it is you want? I mean, just from this conversation that we've had today here, you can see that there's a little bit of diversity here and there. I'm like Supervisor Sullivan. I have a stack of petitions that are signatures that appear to be for my district in excess of 150, I think, that are in favor of doing this. I think that's enough information for me to push it forward to the people.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Two words come to mind, Latin words, vox populi, voice of the people. This is a hot issue. This is one of great interest to our community. I don't think we should make a dedicated group of citizens jump through a bunch of hoops. I would propose that we move our, have our meeting, this, this 227 meeting, and be prepared to conduct a special meeting on March 5th to have this vote. And there is an active resolution, as promoted by the State of Jefferson Committee, which should be the ballot issue. I'd like to see that actually reach the, the point where the voters have, can vote on that particular issue. If the supervisors aren't going to vote on it, then let the people vote on that particular resolution. I have a copy of this, if anyone needs to see that. So if the 227 meeting is in fact factual, and then we have a, conduct a special meeting Tuesday, March 5th, we have enough time to get it on the ballot, that's what I would support.
The, there will be a workshop of the Board of Supervisors regarding the state of Jefferson at 3:00 on the 27th. It is agendized. Supervisor McClure?
This will be my, I think people are pretty clear on what my position is, but I want to clear one thing about a dam on the Smith River. And I'm surprised that my, two of my focus points today are both Ronald Reagan's, and that Ronald Reagan signed the Wild and Scenic Rivers Bill that would allow no more dams on any river that was designated Wild and Scenic. And then the other part of Ronald Reagan is that he says, trust but verify. And we certainly need, I understand that this is a group of concerned citizens, but I don't take kindly to be bullied into a hurry when we have a process that clerks throughout the 58 counties of California follow. And I would ask that that process be followed. And not only do I think that we need to trust but verify, but I remember at our meeting when they came, one of the men stood up and said, let's face it, this isn't really going to happen in our lifetime. It takes so long. Well, if it takes so long, my question becomes, what's the rush? So I would suggest, again, that we're going to table, but I am going to continue to push that if this is a citizen referendum, it needs to be a citizen referendum brought by not bullying, but by process.
Well, you know, again, my, the premise for which I offered that it be put on the ballot was it would allow for time to develop information so the voters could be more informed when they made their decision. To rush to put it on the ballot, short-circuiting some of that information that may or may not be available, in other words, to allow that to develop, I think in weighing speed versus information, I would wait an error on the side of information, a more informed voter. I don't need to have, to go to the lengths of Supervisor McClure and say that you got to go certify all these people that have signed the petition to get on the ballot. I think the Board of Supervisors obviously knows it's a, a topic that is a concern on both sides. And I'm not going to give you the numbers, but the emails, while nasty, and a lot of them from out of the area, were in favor of, how dare you not vote on it right away? Everybody else called, only three wanted to put it in writing, or that ran into me in Safeway, or the gas station, or wherever, said, thank you. Stand your ground. And so I think, and that they do want to weigh in on it. They actually thought that voting on it was a pretty good idea. I just want to make sure that, my intention was that be able to develop the information and put it out there. And I thought that was my fiduciary responsibility. So I definitely would, while it wasn't my initial intention, the fact that we are having the workshop, I would like to postpone a decision until after the workshop, quite simply because I think that if we voted today and rushed to get the information to qualify for the June ballot, we're going to miss stuff. It's not going to get to the print, the adequate information. Just quite simply following up on the LAO's analysis. And the other, going along with that, if it is postponed, if it has to be in November, at least then you're going to have a clearer idea for the state of Jefferson of how many people are involved, whether it's going to be 700,000 or whether it's going to be 1.2 million. The LAO has it at 950,000, you know? And during the workshop, we can talk about things like, there's only one representative for every 750,000 people in a 37 million people state. That's poorly, woefully inadequate in form of representation. We all agree that we, in rural counties, feel missed or underrepresented. And some of us have been fighting, we all have been fighting, for finding partnerships and finding a way to maximize... and finding a way to maximize our leverage. Can the legislature work on something to the effect that there's a senator for every 500,000, or every 250,000, and representative for every 100,000? They absolutely can. It'll cost money. And then the other argument is, well, okay, LA will get more too. There was a, the state actually endorsed a split between Southern California, the LA counties, and Northern, the rest of California. It got to the feds and didn't go anywhere. It's a long process. I just, to start the discussion, I would like to do it on a firm foundation of some facts, and make that foundation as solid as I can. I think it benefits both sides, the pros and the cons. So Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah, I'd just like to, just say that, you know, I've only heard one person here, or a couple of people here, I guess, that said, "Don't, we don't want anybody to vote on it." Well, that's pretty un-American, personally. That's just, I just want to say that out front. The other thing is, is are you afraid it's going to pass? Are you afraid it's going to fail? Because it could go either way.
No, you want me to answer that?
So if it fails, we're done with it, right? If it passes, then we got our work to do. So, and to think that the people are going to, are going to be more informed or less informed from, from the decision that we make today to put it on the ballot, until they have June to vote on it, I think is, we'll already be through the workshops, we'll have the information, you know, and at that point, why not, why not be done with it? Let's, let's get it moving. And I don't feel bullied at all. I feel, I feel like, at least in my district, that people are standing up, saying this is what they want. So if that's bullying, I think we need more bullying.
So what I would like to do is I want to make this very specific on, so as not to create an illusion, if we take a vote to put it on the June ballot, can the arguments be done in time, including the analysis and review from County Council, the pros, the cons, and the fiscal analysis? I don't want to take a vote here today and have to come back next meeting and say, "Oh, guess what, we couldn't make it." Can we get, it sounded like a big maybe.
You can't.
But you're in violation of the rules, because we have motioned to table, it's really voting very small.
Right. You can't discuss on privilege. Right?
Yes.
You can't, to poll you, there's no discussion, but.
Not on motion to table.
I have to go to.
Actually, the motion was to take no action. Semantics? How's that for it?
I put the motion was to table also.
Okay.
I don't remember what the motion was now.
All right. Can I get a question, staff, to answer that? And we're going to take a vote here.
The information that we have right now, we've been talking about the initiative process, not necessarily referendum, there are, okay, if the council has found out they are identical, or they're the same.
Substantially identical.
We know the deadline. The fiscal analysis is dependent on, I'll have to sit down with the auditor controller because the elections clerk said that that information's going to have to come from them. There are signature requirements, as mentioned, the 10 percent of the voters in the last governor's election.
The votes cast for all candidates for the governor, if the county has less than 500,000.
But you're talking about the initiative process, or talking about if the board chose to put something on the ballot?
No, this would be the same for a referendum process.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So the question would be, how in-depth is the fiscal analysis have to be? And the second question is the number of signatures, and can they be developed by that period of time and then.
Standing, standing by here for just a minute. What signatures are required? We didn't have any signatures required to put the fair district on the ballot. And my understanding is the supervisors can have something put on the ballot.
Well, again, this is for, the only stuff that I can find quickly regarding, is regarding an ordinance. An ordinance that Board of Supervisors determines they want to be placed onto the ballot for a referendum. It is stating that it needs to be supported by 10 percent of the voters who last voted in the governor's race.
So it takes an ordinance by the Board of Supervisors?
No, if, okay, so in certain situations, an ordinance that is being proposed to the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors can decide it wants that ordinance to go to the ballot for the vote, for voting on by the people of the county. And in those particular situations, the requirement would be that that, going to the ballot would be supported by signatures.
But an ordinance would mean it's not advisory, an ordinance is binding.
That's correct. Given my limited time to look into it, I haven't found the actual process to do the advisory, though I think it would be somewhat similar, though the signature part portions may not necessarily be completely required. But this is what I'm seeing for how the process would work for the Board of Supervisors to put an ordinance as to a referendum. This is the process that is required. And then, once that is done, it comes to County Council's office for an independent legal analysis, goes to the auditor's office for an independent fiscal analysis, and then all that information will be compiled and sent to the, to the county clerk for her to put onto the ballot.
And is the 10 percent per district or per county?
It's per county, from what I understand.
Oh, here's our clerk.
What a tangled web we weave with a meeting starting in five minutes of Airport Authority. Alicia, do you want to weigh in here?
No.
She's got a book.
She's got a book, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just going to say.
And just for the record, and the TV viewers, go identify yourself in your role.
Alyssa Northrup, Delmarck County Clerk Recorder, I live in Delmarck County.
And elections official.
And elections official, registrar of voters. The Board of Supervisors may submit to the voters without petition, a, or ordinance. But it's the issue of time right now. And I agree on both sides to a degree. Yes, it can be done. Is there a chance there'll be more mistakes? A chance of everything not getting in there that should be? Yes. Because you're dealing with printing deadlines, proofing. People have a chance to do rebuttals. You've got to put arguments, rebuttals. I mean, it's going to be everybody working very closely together, I mean, and everything right on, to make the deadlines. So the supervisors can do an ordinance.
So Alyssa, if we table this today and have our workshop and do this in March, it, does it make sense, if we're going to do this, should we do it today? Or, I mean, time-wise, or can we pull it off if we do it in March?
I'm not going to say you have to do it today. I'm just saying, the longer you wait, the harder it's going to be. And, you know, but then also, you just have to, sometimes you, it's just time is, there's not enough time sometimes, you know? And then March 7th is the filing of the close for nominations also, so everything's going to be coming in at once. And that's what I told Jay, is, you know, you're going to be dealing with County Council. Also, it's not just up to me. County Council is going to have to be doing some things, Auditor Controller's going to have things they're going to have to input also. So it's not just me.
Any idea of the background cost of the auditor, your time, the assessor, who, all the people that have to be involved to do the financial analysis, and get the County Council, and doing all of that?
Well, if, if they were doing it as an initiative, where they would be billed for it, you're probably talking $5,000, $6,000 that they would be billed, you know, any organization or district.
Thank you. All right, let's end it, we've all discussed it. There's a motion on the floor.
I'd like the, I'd like the motion rewritten, please.
A motion by Supervisor McClure to, McClure to table the, the vote today until after the workshop, seconded by Supervisor Finnegan for discussion.
Okay, poll the vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
No.
Supervisor Gitlin?
No.
Supervisor Sullivan?
No.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Well, it's rather moot point, isn't it? For the record, for the record, no. Excuse me, the vote was to table.
To table.
No, my answer is yes. I do think that we should err on the side of information, and there's no rush to hear from. So, is there a motion?
I would move that we put it on the June ballot.
Second. Okay, so move the second, we put "it" on the June ballot. What is "it"?
The Jefferson State Resolution.
The resolution as presented?
As an advisory vote.
Okay, let's get some verbiage.
Yeah, does anybody have a copy of it? I thought you all had copies, and you know what this is all about.
I have the resolution here. Do you want it read?
I want the maker of the motion to read it, to make sure it's his motion.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I want all of this, all of this on there, but I, and I don't think that there's room on the ballot to put it all on there. So I'm thinking probably the verbiage should state that the representation in rural counties is practically non-existent, and that this advisory vote is to inform the supervisors that the people of Delmarck County wish to form their own state.
Okay. And I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. It's been, and that's part of the discussion when I first brought this up, is you've got several different options on a motion, whether to constrict it down to the Jefferson, which is, yet is undefined, whether you want to focus on lack of representation and send that message out there that we'd like to be part of some other state when formed.
No, this reads, this reads that we will be our own state.
So read the motion, please.
A motion from Supervisor Hemmingson to place an advisory vote on the June ballot regarding representation, lack of representation in our area, seconded by Supervisor Gitlin. So there's some different verbiage.
And I think maybe I want to change that to, from, from forming their own, our own state to withdrawal, from, I guess, withdrawal from the state of California.
Secession.
It's not secession.
It's a constitutional process.
That's what a secession.
The constitutional process is forming a new state, not withdrawing.
Supervisor Hemmingson, can I just interject that the verbiage is here, supports the withdrawal of Delmarck County from the state of California and the formation of the state of Jefferson. Would you be comfortable?
That works, that works for me. So I will.
It's been moved and seconded to put this on the June ballot, to move to put it on the June ballot with that resolution for the discussion?
Yes, I have.
Public comment at this point, I, so get a motion out of.
Well, can I ask you if you have anything to say?
I, I, I think, just jumping in there, I think the, the point of the advisory vote to stress this fact, we are getting the feedback from the people in the community as to whether we should vote in that direction. That is, it's an advisory vote, it has no, in the vote by itself does not have anything, any sticking power. So we, we would still, as a board, have to vote once the vote came back from the people. Basically, it would be on your June ballot, you'd vote yea or nay, and then based on the feedback from that, we'd bring it back to the board and vote on it here. That's, and that's, I believe that's the way Tahama has theirs, they have it on the ballot, to vote on it and get the feedback from the people in the community.
Public comment.
I still have a comment, but go ahead.
Kelly Shalong, City of Crescent City. I agree with reaching out to the voters for their input. I'm unsure of the way the ballot's going, the advisory declaration is going to read, and I would, I would recommend that you ask County Council to write something a little more formal and.
Good with me.
Have that agreed upon, so that the voters are clear as to what you're asking for.
I agree with you 100 percent. I didn't come prepared with a resolution in the, off the top of my head, and I would.
Do you want to, God, I hate to go here, but is there enough time to bring it back on our next agenda to make it an action item with the verbiage that would be on the ballot?
Yes.
Roger, is it good with you?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can give this to Gretchen, this, this resolution, which was developed by the State of Jefferson Committee, and that, I think the verbiage is in your comfort zone, Supervisor Hemmingson, which I would second, and perhaps you can use it there to craft the, the new item on the 225 agenda.
Okay, so clarification on the motion. To direct County Council to prepare verbiage for a ballot initiative for the June ballot?
Yeah, I'll, is that a motion? So I'll make that motion.
Not an initiative.
I'm just not sure, it's not an initiative, this is an advisory vote.
You're right.
An advisory vote. I'm just, I just think we need to be working towards the processes all, if we're going to try to get it on the June ballot. If we wait until, if we wait until the next meeting, we're going to be too late. So if we're not working towards that process, in the process of coming up with the verbiage that's going to go on, I have no problem with changing the verbiage. I'm not a verbiage kind of guy, but if, if we can work towards the direction of the essence of what this resolution says, and still be working towards putting it on the ballot, then I would be in favor of that direction.
I hate to help you out here, but what I would suggest is that we would need to call a special meeting, because the resolution is of utmost importance of what, then, once the election rules kick in, to be able to have that language. Even though I'm in opposition to that, I will assist in that way.
I personally don't care if it says, are you in favor of the state of Jefferson? I mean, it's, it's an advisory vote, it's a, it's an up or down, it's a yes or no, you know, and if you're familiar with what's on the ballot, then you would know what you're voting for or against as an advisory capacity, you know.
I hear somebody say that there should be a special meeting.
Well, I think I mentioned March 5th as a possibility.
No, I think March 5th gets out too far, though, I think that's what we'll discuss.
I meant like next week.
Like next week, or Friday?
Prior to the workshop?
I'm not in town.
I'm out of town all week next week.
Oh, what tangled weaves we weave.
Just this discussion, really strengthens the argument of, why are you pushing so fast?
Yeah.
We don't know, you can't even find the right verbiage to vote on, we're not even sure what the parameters of the state is that we're voting on. Help me out here, where are we going?
Well, I think one of the first things that we would end up having to do is sit down with the clerk, and also with the auditor's office. I need to know the parameters of what this fiscal analysis that the auditor has to do to present to be adequate. And I don't know that it has to be terribly onerous, but right now, that would be the first steps that we would undertake to try to get enough information.
Okay, is Friday a holiday?
I'm out of town.
You're out of town Friday? Thursday?
I'm out all this week.
And you're out all next week?
Yeah, I'm out. I'm not even in the state.
And the next week after that, we have Board of Supervisors meeting, and a workshop following that.
Well, I'm a little disappointed that the Chair's browbeat me a little bit about not coming up with verbiage when he put it on the agenda, so, you know.
For discussion of possible action, I admitted the problem.
Perhaps we could get direction from staff to do our due diligence between now and the next meeting, and have whatever information we can develop by that time prepared, and if it's possible to have action, look for a special meeting directly after that meeting to take those actions. Because there's, there's enough unknowns right now that we need to determine whether we can meet this deadline. And I think the auditor controller has to be one of the key focuses here, because if the analysis itself is more detailed than what I'm assuming it has to be, he's not going to have time to do it. And so I want to make sure that he has that ability to present that information. So what, I guess what I would propose is that you give direction to staff, County Council, myself, and we'll meet with the auditor controller and elections clerk to develop that information.
And I will amend my motion to reflect that.
Okay, so we don't have to take an action for staff to do their due diligence to see whether there's time starting today to get on the ballot in June?
Just direct us, and we'll go in that direction.
If you will pull your motion by consensus, I will give direction to staff to do that.
I will pull my motion.
And I will pull the second.
Okay.
May I just say something before?
Go ahead.
Just because something is difficult doesn't mean it's impossible to do. I don't see this as a rush to judgment, I see this as a process of government which is open and transparent, and I see that this is an issue. is an issue that we have the opportunity to put on the June ballot rather than wait for November. And this is, again, box populated. People are, are wanting this matter heard, and this is a wonderful opportunity to do that. It's, it's not as complicated because this is an advisory matter, it carries no teeth. So, let's move forward on it, and I'm, I'm anticipating that we can have this on the June 3rd ballot.
Supervisor, I appreciate your comments very much. By consensus, staff is directed to do that due diligence and to be, have it on our next agenda for an action item. If, and if not, let us know why. And with that, we have a couple of other items to quickly take care of. One would be the budget transfers.
Move to approve.
That would be.
Budget transfers, item 14, 15, 16, and 17 in the agenda, which are budget transfer 0106, 0109, 0110, 0111.
On the next page.
I, I will amend my motion to include items 18, 19, 20, and 21 as part of the same, same motion, which would include additionally budget transfer 0201, 0202, 0203, 0205.
Second.
Okay. Public comment. Poll the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. 31's discuss and take possible action regarding the golden star.
I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Well, before you guys run out, stay close. Jay, do you have a comment on this? Lead it off, please.
Yeah, I'll try to make it as, as simple as possible. We've gone out to bid locally for the remediation of mold at the vet's hall. The bid that came in is at approximately $30,000 based on some work we've done through building maintenance to work with the contractor to reduce that cost. I don't believe that cost is necessarily competitive, and at this point would, would recommend to the board that we reject the bid and go out, which does mean we'll be going to other contractors outside of the area.
Okay, can I get a motion to that effect?
Yes, I have a motion to do exactly that, to seek other bids outside the county.
And can I get a second? Chair will second. Further discussion? Public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Two to one, simple majority, enough for you, Jay?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, very good. Go back out to bid, please. Number 32 is direct staff to make contact with Senator Cesaro, Commissar Tuffman, and Senator Nielsen regarding outreach Department of Housing Community Development regarding the CDBG grants.
I asked for this to be put on the agenda because what, what we're working from is that the CDBG is taking a very new analysis of one of their lines, and it is actually going to make it so CDBG, the city's CDBG can only serve, and they have to document, city residents. And the county's CDBG then can serve both county and city residents. Historically, we have worked together with the city and like, maybe RHS received the city's portion of the, of the CDBG, and Harrington House may have received the county's portion, and then we served all the community, of all the people in the community. And so, now what has happened is we've been, the CDBG is holding firm that they're not going to allow any of that cross-service to happen for our public service portion of our CDBG. And so, I would like, we probably don't have time to do formal letters and that kind of thing, and I think it needs to be write to the, the head staff members and, and get, get these guys over to CDBG and say, "You need to waive this interpretation."
All right. Any other comment? Public comment on this issue? The motion is to direct staff, if by consensus we can do that, are we in concurrence?
Yep.
Okay. Staff so directed, legislative matters? Anything for us? I know we had some issues with Senator Chesbro's weighing in with LTIC and Caltrans regarding the livestock trucks again.
Right. Most of the legislation that is being proposed right now, we're trying to follow that with our advocates, both at the federal, state level. No letters today, but we would anticipate some coming because they'll be back in session.
Okay, very good. The last thing I have to say is, if staff, in doing their due diligence for the ballot initiative, not initiative, I'm sorry, the advisory vote, completes their assessment, and part of that assessment is that the board requires action prior to our next meeting, I will call a special meeting, regardless of whether we have five of the supervisors in attendance or not. Okay? So, that's not going to be the reason it gets stalled. Meeting is adjourned. In three minutes.